I'd like to call this meeting of the Marvin's Planning Board order for September 21st, 2021. We have four members present are online, so we do have a core.
Melinda's here now.
All right, we have five now.
Actually, you have six. The only one you're missing is Kent.
Oh, six, okay. All right, good. Adoption of the agenda. Any changes or deletions that anybody recommends?
Kent, right here.
Oh, Kent, okay.
Yeah, okay. We have a full, full body. Hearing none. Ask for motion to approve the agenda as presented?
So moved.
Kelly?
So moved.
All right, there was a second.
Who was the second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Who was the second?
I.
Aye.
Aye.
I need a second. I need to know who was the second.
Who was the second? Is that Michael?
Michael, raise his hand.
Okay.
Okay.
All right. Moving on. Adoption of the minutes for the 8/17 meeting. Any changes to that? Hearing none. Move to approve the minutes.
So moved.
All right. Rich?
I'll second.
Yes.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Moving on. Public comment period. Do we have any?
Well, we don't have any public here, so.
Anybody online that wishes to make a comment? Hearing none. I'll close the public comment period. Moving on to items of discussion. First item, perform the function of the design review board to discuss and review Marvin Gardens' Phase Two submissions. Hunter?
All right, we have received three, I guess zoning applications for Marvin Gardens' Phase Two, one being for Out parcel two, one being for the building four development, and one actually a sign application of the signage there, kind of at the intersection of Providence Road and Newtown there. With that being said, part of the process of this is you guys must perform these duties as the design review board to ensure compliance. With this being my first one, it was very interesting. I have a lot of, I mean, questions in general about the process as well as the overall kind of, you know, everything we need to review tonight, but I'll kind of, you know, get into that as we move forward. The applicants, Harris Development Group, are there on the call. I will probably kind of just go into each sub one and review kind of the application and what's being presented, and I guess we'll move on from there. Is there any specific questions about the overview there, from any of the board members?
Interesting question.
Okay, Siri.
Siri has a question.
Yeah. Asa, would you like to add anything?
I think he's trying, I don't know. I hate that.
Oh, God, I hate personal things.
We might have lost them. No, they're.
No, we're connected.
Well, we'll move forward. So the first one is for Out parcel two development.
Asa, I think, I think you were muted, Asa. We were trying to talk.
Sorry about that. Can you, can you hear me now?
Yeah, we can.
Can you do a page?
Yeah, sure. We're having some technical difficulties over here. I thought I was talking, but apparently I was double muted. But anyway, Hunter, I'd be happy to kind of give a little, little background of why we're here today, official class. That would be helpful to kind of segue into this.
Say that again, sorry.
Oh, I would say, I'd be more than happy to kind of give a little background and just segue into this, if that would be helpful.
Yeah, I gave them a brief overview and a memo, but if you want to go into, you know, specifically what, you know, what has been done, and then getting into what Phase Two is proposing, kind of like was outlined in the original conditional zoning approvals.
Sure, absolutely. So my name is Asa Harris with Harris Development Partners. Publix owns the shopping center, and we developed it on their behalf. Had with me Alex White, who's also with my office. And, you know, we came before the DRB several years ago, I guess it's been almost three years ago, for approval of Phase One, and I assume all the members of DRB attended by the shopping center today. And at this point, you know, it opened about 11 months ago. We're proceeding with Phase Two, which is the remaining multi-tenant retail buildings, one that's reference Building Four, which is right next to the shop buildings that have already been constructed and are open, and the other being on Out parcel two, which was the only other contemplated multi-tenant building here. So I, we think it's a pretty cut and dry submission, with the, you know, everything being consistent with the original rezoning, and materials and architecture being consistent with what was already built in Phase One, but certainly here to answer any questions, then I won't get too deep into anything. Hunter's going to get a little, little segue in.
Thanks. Yeah, so kind of, you know, getting into it, so for, it's hard because GIS and I made everything updated, and I get the plans, they're so large file, it's kind of hard to actually pull up an overview. But if you guys recall, you know, where Publix is at, there's a, there's a building that already is attached to Publix, which was kind of that Building One and Two, and then you have that one that's where the.
Park and Deller, too.
Yeah, where the nail salon's at, the Mexican restaurant's going into, and the other ones. So the first proposal, well, I'm kind of getting, for Building Four, we'll go beside that, that existing building. And then Out parcel two is out, outside of the parking lot. It's beside Out parcel one, which is where the fueling station was approved for, so it's at the left of that.
It's on the corner.
Corner, yes.
Orientation, a little bit in the packet A 2.1, which is the floor plan.
I do have some of this pulled up. I'm going to share my screen. Share my screen with everybody here.
Except for all of, yeah. Yeah, after that one.
You see how like, it's so wacky?
Okay, all right, that's the one I'm referring to, is the piece of the building upstream left, is that the end of the existing small shops?
No, there's a, there's a.
He's talking all the way over.
Way over.
Right here?
No.
Right here, yes, yes.
Orientation wise?
Yes.
All right.
So.
Asa, you're right.
Yeah, and I, first of, the way the packet's standing and the way we did this out, I'm going to start with Out parcel two. If I can get down here. So here's kind of, so we're going to start with Out parcel two and the review of this. So Out parcel two was approved in the conditional zoning for a multi-tenant facility, not, not to exceed, I think it says at 4,800 or 4,900 square feet, actually it's to not exceed 6,000 square feet. Proposals for a 4,900 square foot building with three tenants, that's all with complying with what was approved in the conditional zoning. And there is a drive-through. Asa, I did have a question. Is the proposed use for this a coffee shop?
It's a Dunkin' Donuts.
Is it?
It is indeed.
Okay. And that, because that was one of my.
It's in the plan, it says Dunkin' Donuts sign.
Okay.
Did you read your packet?
I didn't know.
Well, I was kind of looking at this review, but I wanted to confirm on that, just because the Out parcel two, the only drive-through allowance for that parcel is for a coffee shop, so that would then be compliant. There's a few minor things, which we, we, we as village staff, along with the engineer, would probably amend with their plan, just, but for the most part, it is full compliance from, from a parking standpoint, architectural standpoint, and landscaping design standpoint, as well as the proposed uses. The, the main thing here, once again, the design standard, I got to remember what order this stuff is in, I'm sorry, guys. The design for this is all compliant with what was approved, I have the, I have, I know that the U2 in here can see it, but with what was approved back in the original rezoning as well, this was amended back in 2019 when they came before you guys with the original permit applications to build out Publix and the Out buildings one, one, and one, two, and three. All the materials are the same, the design's the same, so all of that will be compliant with what the ordinance states. Is there any specific questions on Out parcel two?
I do.
Okay.
I do have some questions.
Bring it to us.
On the, where the drive-through is, where it says lighting directional signs, which is going to be furnished and spelled by Dunkin' Donuts, I'm looking at a Masonry screen wall, and I was wondering how high that wall is going to go, and.
Just down.
What, what, for that is? Because again, as you're driving down Providence Road and you look towards the right, there's potential there for somebody then to start hanging some signs on there. If you see where it says 1601, and then you can see where, where, just to the right of that.
Hey, Rich, hold on one second, we're having some technical difficulties. Want to make sure that this thing isn't shut down on us here.
No worries.
I'm afraid I'll try to deal with that.
I don't, I don't know what it's doing. That's what I'm saying, like, the amount of, this is what you need to do with your RAM.
Where'd you say the sign elevations order? Kelly? They said Dunkin'.
All right.
Let me sign it.
Okay, Rich, you're good.
Right, so, so again, I was just wondering, not necessarily about the lighting directional signs, but there appears to be a Masonry screen wall that's going to be aligned, that's going to be parallel with Providence Road, and then just curves behind, I guess, to, to just block where the cars are. I was just wondering how high that was going to be, and then also to make sure that we're not going to hang any signs on the opposite side that's going to be facing.
That's the existing one.
Providence Road.
Good eye.
Yeah, so one thing I'll mention there is that for the drive-through, one of the requirements in the approved conditions for the, for the Marvin Gardens was that any drive-through in Out parcel two have that Masonry screening. So that's why that's being proposed, but two, I mean, Asa, you want to answer the follow of the, the backup on that. They're not, they're not permitted to have signs on that, but.
That's fine. If, if that's what the, because again, I was part of the original plan back in 2014, 2015, when this came up, and again, if it's been rezoned and there's been changes to it, so I wouldn't have seen that. But that's fine. In fact, that's what's in there right now, that there's no other signs that will be hung on either side of that, then I'm fine.
Yeah, that is, that is correct. The, the original zoning just had a condition that there would be a Masonry screen wall for the tenants. We're going to have a screen wall that's going to have the same stone that you see out there of the building, and then the retention pond wall, and the sign that we're going to review, the end of this, I guess at the end of the agenda here, for our items, it's going to look kind of consistent with that. So actually, I don't know, Hunter, if you can even scroll through that page, that same kind of four-foot stone wall is kind of what you can see in front of the drive-through there, so. So, yeah, go down, one more, yeah, there you go. For this same, like, this is what's proposed out the quarter of the intersection, but the right-hand side is a four-foot stacked stone base that the sign is mounted on. It would be similar to that, and which you can see over by the drive-through, obviously with no signage on it, and there's no signage allowed on it, so.
Okay, well, that's, that's good, that, that looked very nice. Okay, thank you.
Yeah, absolutely.
I have a, it's not necessarily about materials, but it's more about design functionality. If you go to the first, just the, the one, two, three, four.
Do you have a part, the parking spots right there?
The five parking spots, like, that is a traffic, that is going to be.
I've got that noted, because I actually made the same kind of recommendation.
Oh, gosh.
The parking requirements, it's kind of confusing with the multi-tenant, but it goes anywhere from 100, or one spot per 100 square feet, to the general requirement of Out parcel, for this Out parcel, which is one parking spot per 200 square feet. So the minimum requirement's 49, or the minimum requirement at that one per 200 square feet would be 25. They're proposing 57. Those could easily be taken out and still be compliant, even if it's at the one per 100 square feet.
I mean, because if, if, you know, Dunkin' tends to be, when you have a setup like that, it tends to be a lot of drive-through traffic, so you don't have a lot of people parking and going inside, so, you know.
Yeah.
Seems like the parking's a bit overkill if you don't have the wires.
Asa, on those five spots by the parking drive-through, is there any specifics on why those additional ones were being proposed that way, right here?
You know, obviously, I have to evaluate and get back to you if there's anything we can do. Obviously, those are pretty important for, you know, because they're in close proximity to the building, but as a whole, you know, obviously, if the village wanted to have us, you know, reevaluate the spaces, then we certainly would be happy to do that. I just, I have to go back and also look before I'm officially informed and say that we can definitely get rid of them or not, so.
Yeah, and that's where I'm, because like, when reviewing the ordinance, and like I said, with this being my first one and diving into this, it's, either way, if you're, from my understanding of the proposal in the minimums, spots per square footage, and either way you interpret it, it would still meet the, I think, because you're proposing 57 parking spots, I think 54, was it 54 regular and three handicap? And the minimum, even at the one that states for, if it's like a restaurant with drive-through, which I know this is a coffee shop, it states that it's a one per 100 square foot, and so even if you proposed after the whole 4,900 square foot building, you would have 49 spaces, this will be compliant, but.
The, the other issue is there, I mean, it, first of all, I think it's an accident-prone area with that type of design, but then you're also asking pedestrians to cross, to cross drive-through traffic. There's no, there's no pedestrian walkway. They'll have to be crossing in front of people pulling out, and then there's a rail there that is blocking the entrance to the, to the front walkway. So, I mean, if you want to, if you, if you are required, if you must keep those spots because you want them, I would just suggest maybe having an opening there for railing, or, I mean, it just, it just seems dangerous for pedestrians, so I, I'm just not really sure of the point of those spots.
And I understand what you're saying with the railing, but I think that's to stop people accidentally walking out in front of another car.
Absolutely, so.
Pulling out, but, but I agree with you that there is no pedestrian walkway, I could catch.
I will.
Yeah, so we'll certainly take a look at that, and I think it's a very good point, and I think, you know, if nothing else, we, if the parking spaces have to stay, then we could certainly add a railing on the other side as well, to prevent people from only crossing, eventing aid locations, and putting a crosswalk in there if need be, but I'll certainly look at it, given, you know, given you make some really good points, and I think that, you know, there's certainly some merit to getting rid of those spaces, so we'll do that with serious consideration, we'll do that.
Thank you.
And, and one thing I'll mention, too, is that, just for, for all parties playing board in the applicant, is that regardless, or, you know, after your guys' decision tonight, if it is to recommend approval with certain things, this will be reviewed by our engineer, and then some of this stuff could come up there, you know, pointing out some of that. And the ordinance states, you know, or one of the things that's changed, that, actually, I don't, I don't know how much you guys have been informed with some recommendations by our village attorney with some of this process, but essentially, if some of that stuff is reviewed by the engineer, and it's not changing kind of the characteristic, or it's still kind of compliant with the ordinance, then they can make those amendments, and it's, you know, does not have to come back to you guys. But that, that is something regardless, that the engineer will be taking into consideration, because that was already on my notes for review.
Yeah, I think, I think the only thing about that is that if they do remove those spots, you've got a big open space, so like, what is there landscaping, is there, like, you know, how are you going to fill it if it's not parking spaces? I don't know if that's part of, if landscaping is part of this.
Proposal it is. It's on the last page.
Yeah.
It's all, and essentially, they've already got plannings within that, it could be just recommended that they extend that.
Expand it, okay.
Yeah.
A, a tree.
Is there any, any other specific questions for Out parcel two? Out parcel two, or anything that, Asa, you would like to add?
I don't know, nothing for us, unless there's any specific questions, we'd be happy to answer, and then civil engineer or architect here as well, so.
No questions here?
I'm having a hard time figuring out.
So these.
Where, like, which, which side elevations match the overhead, like, where this little pocket park thing is, the little, I guess that's in between the two buildings.
Yeah, we'll get into that here in a sec.
Okay.
If there, Austin, I need a guidance here, is should they make a recommendation per each one, or a general recommendation at the end?
I'd do each one. If, if they were, are they three separate applications?
Mm-hmm.
I would do each one.
Okay. So we just need a motion?
Do you have one, do you, do you have a suggestion?
I mean, essentially, if, if, if the, the board feels comfortable with it, with this proposal outside of, you know, the few things with parking, it can be recommended for approval. The DRB language is weird, because then council disaffirms it, right? So I don't, is it just they approve it contingent upon?
The, the DRB approves, and the council affirms the DRB approval.
Okay, and I would just say, recommend, or that they approve it contingent upon successful review of the village engineer, and as long as that, the engineer, I mean, comments do not.
So I'd just, I'd just leave it with approval, approval of the engineer, because if, any, anything that, any comments the engineer has, it's going to have to be fixed anyway.
Yeah, exactly.
Well, will the engineer, will the engineer have issues with walkways and things? Like, is that his purview? Because if that's not something that's under his purview, then where?
So some of this, I'm just trying to leave with this, with the design review stuff, our, the village attorney reviewed the language, it's kind of like, there's, there's going to be some amendments made to this, and part of that is some of the, some where we have authority, because a lot of this stuff is laid out specifically within the approved conditions and development standards in Marvin Gardens, in regards to walkways and stuff. So to answer your question, yes, the engineer would review that to make sure that it's compliant with what was approval in here, and if it's not, then it will be noted, and they have to make those revisions. But like, as additional type conditions and requirements, we don't really have that authority to request. It can be recommended.
Like pedestrian walkways from parking spaces?
That's what, what I'm saying is, is if it's, when the engineer reviews it, it would be, they would review what the conditions are in the Marvin Gardens' specific condition ordinance, and if it does not comply with that, as in, like, the pedestrian walkway facilities are like, are outlined in here from parking and crosswalks and all that other stuff, if that's not compliant, then it will be noted and must be changed. But other, other type of conditions in regarding adding pedestrian facilities that are not required, it can be recommended, but we're, according to our attorney, we're not sure if we have that authority.
Right. I just, I don't know the ICD very well, so.
Yeah.
I just want to make sure that either those parking spaces are removed, and if they're not removed, that pedestrian, you know, walkways are built in, because if not, that's, that's a safety issue, regardless of whether, what the ICD says.
Mm-hmm.
You have to protect pedestrians, and that is like, you know, people get their coffees and they step on the gas, and they're running over people, so just.
There is, I will mention, though, one of the things, it, there's a stop sign that is proposed at the end.
Yes.
Now, once again, that's one thing, but, I mean, it can be, you know, that can be a recommendation made, and then, once again, council can affirm it, if so.
Okay.
And then I would just have to confirm on, once again, what are the ordinance specifically states, as well as get with the engineer on the review. But that will be done before council affirms it.
Okay. I have one other question about some lattice work, it's hard, I can't, there's so many freaking pages in this that it's hard to see. Here it is. And this, and that, so in the upper right-hand corner.
Right here.
On the, sorry, sorry, of the building.
Uh-huh.
The back, yeah, that right there.
Mm-hmm.
Is that an overhang? Is that, what is that?
A pergola or something?
Is it, it almost looks like a pergola on here, but then I can't figure out which picture it is associated with, up above.
I think it's.
That overhang. Asa, do you want to add right here?
Yeah, if you, if you go to the elevations real quick, though, I'm unsure Bill, if you have to talk through, I think that, that was part of the initial, so basically what we did for the elevations is we took what was initially approved, and Bill, do you want to talk through that?
Yeah, go to the, go to the next set of pictures, huh? The bottom left, the bottom right-hand corner, there is a slope roof on the, so there's a high slope roof, and then down lower, there's a slope roof. So one of those dash lines you're looking at is that slope roof, but also towards the intersection, you've got the pergola, the trellis wood, that you can see extending away from the building to break down the scale. On the other drawing, the bottom left, you see that pergola sticking out towards you on the left-hand side, and on the far, far left, you see the slope roof that's picking out for that side also. Does that make any sense at all?
Uh, yes. So the pergola's really to break up the height, it's not necessarily functional.
Is it going to have that effect, to give it some more articulate scale a little bit better?
But it's more of a designed function rather than a, than a, than a, actually having a purpose, like shade or something like that.
Yeah, the, the slope roof will have more shade than the pergola, the trellis, but, you know, the trellis will provide some shade, but yes, it's more of an architectural element to break up that mayhem from the, from the main intersection.
Yeah, that makes sense, thank you.
You want?
All right, that's all from me.
All right, are there any other questions at Out parcel, Out parcel two?
Need a motion.
Motion to approve contingent upon engineer approval.
Yeah, to, yeah, approval and insurance, insurance compliance.
And insurance compliance?
No, I would just say to ensure.
Oh, to ensure compliance, okay.
So we're looking for a motion to recommend, or to approve Out parcel two, the application for Out parcel two, just contingent upon engineer review to ensure the compliance with the design standards that was approved for the Marvin Gardens' ICD.
What you said.
Yeah, what you said.
Keep it short and simple.
Yeah. Second, that was me.
Sure, I can, I'll go ahead and make it, and we go ahead and approve Out parcel two, which would be contingent upon the engineering approval, and, and to ensure compliance.
Yeah, with the Marvin Gardens' ICD development standards, that's kind of the.
Okay, with the.
Hold on, who made them?
He's making it.
He's making it, then, I guess.
I thought you made it.
Well.
No, he seconded something that hadn't gotten made yet.
Okay.
He'll second it again in a second. So Rich just made the motion.
I'll second it then. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I need to say everyone.
Yeah, it's good to.
Aye, this is Melinda, aye.
Mike Waddles, rising in, Sam Melinda said aye.
Everyone.
Ken said aye.
Ken said aye.
Okay.
I think that's everybody.
All right, that's everyone.
I think that's definitely a majority.
Any nays? None.
In the barn.
Okay, now we are moving to commercial building four.
Okay, uh, now we're moving to commercial building four.
I can orient you on this building. I'm not sure that the names, many of your guys are inch by inch tall, but they, the far, far left is the existing building. That's the last building to the left. And then there's someone or a V shape, a boomerang if you will, going to Publix. But the building on the far, far left in that image is the existing building. And then there's a green space in between buildings and then you've got the building four. If you could go up one slide, please. This is the pocket park in between, so I just rotated, just rotated ninety-three, so what says retail building three at the top, that's the existing building. Then you've got the pocket park and then you've got retail building four, that's what we're proposing. If you go up one more slide. I'm sorry, go to one more slide past that. The elevation at the top left is the up off the front or the parking lot elevation. The pocket park would be just where those three, or those two umbrellas are, two sets of umbrellas are, that's the pocket park on the left of that building. When you, the next elevation, upper elevation on the right is the view from the pocket park. The bottom elevation on the left is the, is the rear drive. And then the bottom elevation on the right would be the end, the, the end of the series of buildings. So that kind of orients what's where.
Can we look at the, can we look at the full site plan so we can see it in relationship to the Publix? Do we have that available to see?
Yeah, yes and no because the computer's flash camera is not going to allow me to pull up the site plan.
It's too detailed.
It's too detailed and if I pull it up on GIS, the imagery is not updated. But essentially if you're at Publix, there's a building that's perpendicular and then this one's going beside that building.
Would it help if I showed my screen? I have a more recent aerial to show where this exactly is going.
Yes.
Yeah, we can do that. I'll just stop sharing.
Okay, yeah, stop sharing. You might have to give him like, I don't know if he can share. Yeah, he can. Okay, good.
Did you see it?
Yeah, so it's perfect.
Yeah, I can see it.
Okay, so here's the, here's the Publix and then here's the shops, building three. And then shops, building four is going in this location here.
Perfect. That's what I wanted to see. Thank you.
And so this pocket park is in between the existing building and the future building?
Yes.
Correct. If you, if you think of Publix as being number one, the building immediately contiguous to it or adjacent to it is number two. We have a pocket park in there with trellises and landscaping, so it's gonna be the same vocabulary as that. But the other side of the next building, three, yes.
And Ase, correct me if I'm wrong, but in our, in our pre kind of initial meeting, the reason it's being proposed this way is because technically the, or in reality, the pocket park that's already existing really has no functionality. And this one that's being proposed has somewhat of functionality or just kind of better aesthetically pleasing as well.
So what we proposed, we, we believe fully adheres to the zoning and the exceptional plans. But if you actually, if you actually pull back up the pocket park detail, what we, what we have proposed here is something we think will be able to be more actively used. Especially if we have restaurants on both end caps. You know, there's gonna be an active area in between that can be used for dining, not associated with those restaurants necessarily. It could be used for outdoor activities, you know, outdoor games, all sorts of things. We really try to provide a, an area that would, you know, so there you go, you can see we have a much larger concrete area that's between the two or a hardscape area between the two with the landscaping on either end and the pergola with the thought that that area will be more actively utilized versus just, you know, like, you know, like doing more range planners or something like that. It kind of breaks up the area and prevents us from utilizing it or whether it be, you know, again, outdoor dining, not dedicated for the restaurants or benches or cornhole or games for children or whatever it might be.
So, so if a, if a restaurant went into either of those end parcels.
There is one going in the, the end of the existing building.
Okay, so retail building three?
Yes.
So they technically would not have any space for outdoor seating? Because this would not belong to them.
So that, so both buildings have acres for a paid patio dining that is going to be for their dedicated use. This area in the center is not going to be for any particular tenant's use. It's gonna be for the shopping center patrons or for instance, there's people waiting and there's games set up or something like that. It's gonna be for those purposes. So just a general overall amenity area, not for a particular tenant.
Okay, that makes more sense. So the patio dining, which currently in this rendering includes the umbrellas and tables, is part of the restaurant.
Yeah, that's where, that is permitted as part of their restaurant space and what in the middle is open space technically where you can get it to go and sit there, but the restaurant itself would not be, would not be able to control the seating in that area.
Yeah, I, I like the, the center. I like the center idea. I think that's, you know, because people are always waiting and what do they do? My question really is are we also approving so in terms of those, the tables and umbrellas? That is, or even, you know, a lot of, a lot of restaurants are now putting up those, you know, tents with the plastic curtains to do indoor, outdoor so they can roll them up. Like what, where, where do we stand with that? And then how does that then fit in with? Like how do we control that or not control that or, because they can be a real eyesore.
Uh, that is a very good question.
Because the buildings, the buildings are beautiful. The materials are beautiful. I, I love the look and feel of it, but like you have a restaurant come in and they put up some burgundy, you know.
So if there was any type of overhang or stuff, that wouldn't be compliant because any type of aesthetically designed, I mean, the material that's being used is a little different, but like any of that would have to be compliant within here. With the Marvin Garden, I mean, here is the Marvin Garden, it's horrible. Uh, I cannot recall if it states, and Ase, you might be able to refer, you might be able to answer this for me. But specifically, we don't, the uses itself, once the building is approved, you know, they don't come back for tenant approval or approval as long as it's compliant and the tenant is, it's a permitted use within what's the proposed, in the proposed ordinance. With that being said, what they do in that patio specific, is that something that's already going to be designed and put in? Or is that something that the tenant itself is responsible for and then they have to ensure compliance? Or I mean, we would ensure compliance, but at the same time, like they're made aware of the design standards on that?
So, um, and then I need to answer your question with a question, but when, when tenants come in, do they have to go for a zoning compliance permit right before they submit the accounting?
Correct. They come and get a zoning, a commercial zoning permit for that use. Um, and typically, the ones, for example, the ones that we've received so far for the Mexican restaurant, well Marco's Mexican restaurant and the, there's a restaurant going in here. All, all that they have, all that permit is proposed is the interior work, nothing that has anything outside. So with that being said, you know, I guess, you know, that comes down on, on staff here. If they put something outside, it would have to be conveyed to them and there's not a permit board and that's where to an extent is some of it, because we have not received like the site, the plan that shows anything for exterior for that, right? For what's existing currently.
Yeah, I mean, it's just, just we need, I don't know, I mean, I don't know where it happens in the process, but you know, just from a functionality, from a functional standpoint, they're gonna have to also section that area off to show people that this is seating for X restaurant. And there's, right now, there's no barrier except a visual one. So like, is it planters that breaks that up? You know, is it, is it a tent? Is it like, how do they claim that area physically?
It said, well, part of it in the ordinance is that it, because I remember reading this earlier, says the commercial amenities and recreational spaces proposed in the district shall be maintained for public use and shall not be reserved for private use or established as leasable space for tenants except for the portions of these areas, and it's referencing the eight hundred square feet. In which must be surrounded by a gate or fence and reserved for the patrons of a tenant. And that shall not exceed eight hundred square feet. So it should be gated off for them to be eligible to use that according to what the ordinance states.
So a gate or fence, but is there, is there any type of design? Are there any type of design restrictions on types of, are you using umbrellas? Are you not? What color? Is it iron patio furniture? Is it not?
Some of the.
What kind of gate?
Some of the outdoor furniture, if I recall, a lot of that was approved in the original resoning. I think, Ase, do you, you wanna add time in there like a specific?
Yeah, so I think what we did is when we got to, you know, outdoor furnishing, site amenities, I think what we did is we ran them by the village as a, as a courtesy. Um, so that, you know, we would all be on the same page, but there really wasn't a mechanism in place. I kind of, the reason I brought the zoning, um, whatever, the zoning permit that the tenants have to get is I think that that's kind of the mechanism that the village has to ensure, you know, nothing happens that you, that you guys haven't seen, you know, reviewed and approved. I think there's already, for instance, the fence, there's already elements on site that I think have already kind of set the the framework for what that fence would, would wanna be, because there's a fence at the balcony of Publix and several other fences on site. So, um, yeah, I, I think that's kind of the mechanism. Uh, and they'll, we'll weigh in as well, but I think that zoning permits, the mechanism to kind of control what's happening in any of the outdoor spaces, which really the only outdoor spaces are the acres worth of patios.
And before, and like I said, I'll add in is that we've only received now one like commercial for the existing building. So with that being said, that did not include what they were utilizing the patio space for. And so if they're, would like to use it, like technically that wasn't part of the original script of the permit. I mean, all they have to do is, I mean, say what they're putting out there and then that, that's where we ensure compliance. For example, if retail building four gets, gets built and an applicant comes to get the commercial for the, for that use to, for a restaurant. Um, and when they do that, they show me what the interior renovations and stuff are doing, uh, just, you know, kind of giving me an overview. But they can include a site plan that includes, hey, this is what our exterior, you know, this is what our plan for that exterior eight hundred square foot patio. But that hasn't, that has not, with, with this being a newer development as well as we just, literally it was last month. When we got the one for building three or a month and a half ago. There was not a outside site plan that I can recall. I'd have to go look.
Yeah, I mean, I, I agree with, I think I agree with Ase that, that this might not be the avenue for that, but it seems like it's a loophole right now, like nothing is really controlling that area. Like what do you guys, I mean, if you guys, if you guys have leases, does your lease address the outdoor patio area at all and what they can and can't do in that space? And if we don't have anything that actually dictates how to be in compliance in that outdoor space, like is it, is it too late? Like, because I mean, we could have people, and I'm not saying that they would, because I'm sure they're paying a decent amount for this, this parcel, but you know, it could be, they have Corona umbrellas out there and it ruins the aesthetic of this lovely building, so.
It's, it's kind of a, it's a broad thing because in this where in section, of the section five of the approved ordinance, it talks about arch, um, architect, design and performance standards. Essentially it states that exterior building features and all of that must be consistent with that. So I mean, that's kind of our thing, but it is very broad slash, I, I don't know what they do from a tenant standpoint on, you know, notifying that, but you know, to Ase's point, when we get a permit, that's what we review. We just haven't had one necessary to get there yet.
Okay, but someone has put in a permit to, for that retail building three in space.
Yes, to, to do the, do a commercial, to do a kitchen, or to do a restaurant, however, their permit did not include anything for the exterior patio.
Okay.
And so, I mean, once again.
So it might just be, it might just be a matter of you guys.
I, I would say that, use your example, Corona umbrella would be outside advertising, which is probably not not allowed.
It just, once, with me being kind of new and understanding this, if some of this is just gonna be, the building gets built when tenants come in, like some of that just is known that that's what, you know, needs to be addressed. With it, with me getting that one within my first month being here, all I was looking at is, I mean, I went through everything here and was like, there's not much because the building itself, what goes through is this process. There wasn't anything being proposed at that time for that restaurant in that out parcel, but it's kind of a good thing to note either, but it's just.
So we should probably verbally tell them, if you want to use this outdoor space, you need to submit
The design plan.
A design plan for the permit. Now, if it's gonna be a separate permit, since it's an outdoor space instead of an indoor space, like that, that's on, that's on us, that's on Marvin.
Well, they can include, you know, moving for, further, the process would be when they come and get, they're, they're applying to, for that use. So the commercial building's already built, they're not applying for building permit. Essentially Harris Development Group right now is doing the building, building part of it for the zoning permit for the building and all that. When anything commercially is specifically Marvin Gardens, they come to get a commercial use application to make sure that the use is consistent or compliant with the ordinance. Typically in that too, then I have any type of interior renovations, because they have to get a permit through, through the county to get their electrical and all that to ensure their compliance and everything the county does. So with that being said, like, the backend of that is, you know, I, it's, they're not necessarily showing me a full site plan or scale designs like it would be if they're building a building. Where some of this would actually be addressed.
But would the use not be an outdoor dining?
No, because it's just restaurant.
Okay. All right, then.
Because that, that's an extension of the, the interior use.
Okay, well, I guess we just need to figure out then how to address it, because we wanna.
Yeah.
We don't want Austin to fall asleep while we're discussing it.
And, and Hunter, we're certainly happy to work, work with you. We don't personally review the plans.
Yeah.
They actually, they go to Publix and they review internally, but we're happy to work with you. And I think it's a good point and I mean, you know, you know, Publix wants to have a very high quality, you know, class A center, so I mean, but we'll, I guess we'll follow up after this and have the conversation and see what we can do. You know, I believe it's our mutual interest to make sure it looks good and it's a really good point, so.
Yeah, other than that, I mean, the pocket park is great. I like the bike racks and it looks like if there's teak furniture, I mean, it looks, it looks really nice.
And once again, kind of getting in with this, the parking's already been created because it was part of the original site plan, so essentially all this is a, the exterior look, which is all complying with what would have been originally approved. So, you know, if there's, is there any other questions on, on building four here?
I don't think so.
No, back to just looking at the actual two dimensional here, the floor plan. Pretty straightforward.
Yeah. If there's no other questions and, you know, basically the approval with, I mean, that, that can be kind of addressed, but I don't know if there's anything that we can.
No, that's an internal, that's an internal thing for us, yeah.
Internal process.
Yeah. Entertain a motion.
Just to approve.
To approve is presented. Anybody?
I'll make the motion. This is Melinda.
Thank you, Melinda. I'll second.
All right. Any further discussion? All right, all in favor?
Aye.
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 All right. Anyone who's not on screen needs to say their name before they say aye.
That was Kent, Kent, aye.
Okay. All right.
Melinda, aye.
Yep.
Ken Marino, did he vote?
Any opposed? Oh, fair it out. Hearing none? Approved?
All right, now do we need to signage, the Marvin signage?
Yeah, the sign application.
So this one. Ase, will you give some background on this? Because I know that you, there was discussion, I can, I can't remember if it was with council, with, with DRB on this signage. I know what, I know what the intent is. I know what, I know what the intent is and what the request by Publix, but, you know, looking back, I know there was an original design on it, and I'm trying to, and just to get whoever-
Sure, absolutely, yeah, absolutely. And you mind pulling up the, our, I can share the sign on screen, whichever is easier.
I've got it.
Okay, so, what was discussed, and it was actually around the opening, there was some discussion about visibility from the intersection and the fact that it really, the corner, you know, had the pond there, but there was some discussion, actually I think it was between some of the council members, right in advance of Publix opening, and one of Publix's vice presidents, about, you know, there was an opportunity here to possibly do some, something nice, a gateway feature that would both serve the village and Publix, you know, mutually beneficial, serve as a, kind of a gateway to Marvin, also, you know, have Publix's name on it, so people would know that that was indeed, you know, the Publix, the Publix center. Especially once this out parcel two building is constructed, you won't be able to see into the center anymore. And then as the other out parcels are developed as well, and the landscaping matures, you're really not gonna have any visibility into the center. So, you know, we had some conversations and we kind of prepared a concept, and that's what we have here. Actually, there was an earlier concept, and I believe it came to, I believe rope had brought it to you all-
Yeah.
-in actually for a courtesy review, is what I recall, is that, I don't know if anyone else-
Yep. I think we-
Okay, okay, so you guys have, you've seen this before?
Yes, I think, I think the last time we saw it though, and we didn't bring it up, but I think the village brought up the fact that it wasn't our font, apparently?
Yeah, it was that.
And it was kind of small, so. So this is, this is our font?
So, since then, we actually-
Sure.
Yeah, so since then, we actually, that's the effect we got, and we changed the Village of Marvin font to be taller, and we think we have achieved the correct font, I'm not sure. But, so that's where, that's where we ended up with this version. The prior version had, I think the Village of Marvin, but it was in more, cursed font, and it was much smaller, and then, and then that's how we ended up in this iteration. And that's, this is what we're actually looking to move forward with and create construction plans up at this point.
Bob Marklees, is, is this look like the correct font to you? Because I think it's definitely, the size is so much better. But I like the sign a lot, I just, I don't wanna approve something that's not-
How was you looking at it?
Yeah, I, I think it looks great.
How was looking at the seal?
I love the lettering, how it's all distinguishable, and I love the logo that's there, so. I don't have any issues with it.
Does anyone actually know what the Marvin font is? I have no idea.
That might be lost to history.
Yeah, it looked like the font and the seal, though.
Yeah.
Yeah.
That's what we usually think of it, is it look like a seal?
What I love about it is that without a doubt, you can see Publix's logo, you know, that font, and it distinguishes itself from the Village of Marvin, it's such a different thing, you can't help but not see both at the same time.
Yeah. And it's got our seal on it, yeah. I don't think that was on the original.
No, I think, I think it looks great.
Any other questions?
I wish our font was older, but that's our problem, not theirs.
That's ours, yeah.
And we would be more than happy to change, I, I think we, the seal itself, we have to get your, your graphics before we move forward anyway, and we're gonna have to actually come back. So we'd be more than happy to, you know, confirm with the village and change the font, it'd be more than happy to do that, so.
Thank you, I don't, I, I think it looks very similar to, it's just, it's very tall. Yeah.
Yeah.
We need a, we need a brand guide.
There's been conversations about that.
Yeah, but I mean, if somebody complained about the fact that we didn't have the, they didn't have the right font the last time, like somebody knows what it is, so. Who, 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 how did you guys know which font to use? Did you just kind of eyeball it from the seal, or did someone actually give you the name of the font?
Looks like just time's there, hold on.
You know, honestly, enough times have passed, I can't recall what our sign vendor did, but I think they, I believe they used it from the website, is how they got the font, I believe. Your, your village's website, which is actually how they got the prior font as well, but that was the incorrect font. So, you know, you raised a good question about what really is truly the correct font, and I don't really answer.
Well, this is the new website now that has the correct font, so.
Okay, alright. Any, anything else from the board, because I'll, I'm happy to make a motion to approve.
Any other conversation?
Just one quick question, the illumination, it says external, so is that if we're shining up onto it?
That's, that's correct, that's the intent, is to put a couple, a couple lights down at the base. Yeah, I should say a couple lights, really a long, long linear light that would kind of whitewash it at night, it's somewhat similar to what you see directly across the intersection, but it wouldn't be internally illuminated, where they would, you know, light up and kind of glow, more or less.
Right, so it's not-
One requirement, so they're all signage.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's-
And that's consistent with the rest of the-
I was about to add, part of the, the, and Ase kind of mentioned it, is basically if you guys kind of, I don't know if this is fully needs to be approved or how it needs, because they will, i- if approved essentially, or recommended, they move forward on actually getting the construction plans for this, which if you guys recall two months ago, my first meeting when we did actually the signage for the cottages, they had detail, a, a, a construction plan for those signages that showed the lighting and all of that. That'd be something that would, that they would get submitted with us, and I'm, once again, the DRB language and certain things, I'm not sure if it fully has to come back, or since, since the aesthetics and all that's compliant, okay with you guys with the ordinance, then essentially you guys can go ahead and approve, and then once again, just contingent upon construction plans and success, and successful review.
Say that again, but, cause I was-
The, the signage can be approved tonight, and then it just needs to be contingent upon Harris Development Group getting the construction plans for this sign, and then it'll be needed to be reviewed by village staff for full compliance.
Yeah, they should have the lighting-
Yeah.
When that as well, is that as well.
Okay.
And somebody needs to send a super high res of the village seal, because if it's gonna get blown up that big, if that image is not-
We have a vector.
Really good, it's gonna look awful.
We have a vector.
Vectors are good, alright. So, I can make a motion to approve signage as rendered, what's the-
Contingent?
Contingent on construction plans submitted to the staff?
Being reviewed by us.
Being reviewed by the staff and approved.
Yes.
Motion, a second?
I will second those.
Alright, Melinda beat you. Any further discussion? Can we see hands?
Yes, I'll have one sec.
Just one second.
I wish there was an easier way to do this.
It's called stop using WebEx.
Dear God. I hate it.
Okay, all, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Michael, Rich.
Melinda, aye.
It's aye. Aye.
Any nays?
Any, yeah. Kent?
Aye.
Aye. Any nays? unanimous approval.
Alright, I think that's it for Publix, correct?
Yeah, Ase, I will follow up with you tomorrow, just to discuss a few, uh, discuss some, you know, the game plan on, a few things need to move forward, but we are good to go.
Fantastic, thanks, thanks so much, appreciate all your help.
Thanks, gentlemen.
All the feedback, and we're excited about this, so thank you all very much.
Thank you.
Thank you for coming.
Bye.
Alright, moving on, discussion, minor subdivision application twenty-one dash one-two-seven-three-two for ninety-eight nineteen Chestnut Road.
Yes, if you guys recall at the previous meeting, I shared with you guys a preliminary, a preliminary plat for the four lot subdivision at the corner of Chestnut and Marvin Road. Sorry, I'm gonna get this tool back up. Essentially after that, feedback. Okay, hold on. After that feedback, they amended and actually then submitted a full final plat per our ordinance. It needs to be recommended to council per that, it's in with full compliance of our ordinance. It's pretty straightforward. One of the big changes from the last one was that, per your guys' recommendation, they did reach out to DOT about driveway access, and DOT came back and suggested a shared driveway to get there. Hi, our computer. Anyways, there's a shared, there's a one shared driveway access for the creation of three new lots coming off of Marvin, and that, and that's really the biggest thing. So it's plotted for that, it's plotted for all three of those lots to have use for that. I'll mention the applicant is, or is on here, but would you like to add anything, Brandon?
No, this is Brandon, I'm from the Art of Harris, for the Civil Engineering Consultant Project. Just to go on what Hunter had just shared, we did reach out to DOT early, I had suggested and hearing what you guys had mentioned at the last planning board meeting, and DOT did not want to grant four individual driveways, so we kind of hit a compromise and got them to agree to allow us to have a single one. As far as lot four goes, I think Hunter had mentioned this last time as well. The plan for lot four, which is where the existing home is, it'll maintain its driveway to Chestnut Road, there's no reason to change that, and the plan is lots one through three will be brand new homes, and lot four, they will actually renovate and update that home and put it back on the market.
Thank you, and so, in the, in your guys' packets, I did include the ordinance, or our language, specifically on the plat requirements and the process. The applicants complied with all that, once again, the subdivision itself is compliant with the standards set forth in our Marvin Residential District, and just need a recommendation for approval, unless there's any-
I have a question.
Yep.
Is, so this is a, so if we're looking at these just as individual lots, clearly it's a by right type of setup, but the property next door would be Barnes. Is that considered a rural property and even though it's got livestock?
Well, I mean, it, it could be considered rural, but it would not change the difference of-
It wouldn't change the setbacks?
No.
If I may, this is Brandon, it would not amount, you know, the zoning district has specific side to its setback that is twenty foot, which we're observing.
Yeah, the only time, I mean, the difference is sort, with setbacks is, besides certain uses, but the main primary use on that lot is still residential. That's considered an accessory, so there is no, they have setbacks for their accessory use on their property that they're supposed to be compliant to, but with this property, they don't have to comply. That, that is not a responsibility of the other property, of this property specifically. Is there any other questions on the subdivision?
Hearing no other conversation, I'd entertain a motion-
To?
To approve.
Recommend, recommend-
Recommend-
Approval.
Approval to the council- as submitted.
Yeah, I'll go ahead and make that motion that we recommend approval to council for the siding.
Okay, Richard, Rich makes the motion.
I will second that, it's Melinda.
Melinda, okay. Any further discussion? All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Melinda, aye.
Did we lose, oh, there's Michael, okay. Alright, any nays? Motion passes.
Okay, thank you.
I definitely have real concerns about this, but if there's nothing legally, then-
Yeah, I'll mention, and actually Chaplin brought that up during the council meeting. If it meets the specific definitions of a minor subdivision, and this is even for the rural, there's not much legally that you guys, legally if we deny, we can get sued, because it's in full compliance of what our standards and our ordinance.
Well, it's only got lot one, it's only, I just, I'll just go back to the home over there.
Moving on, discussion, it's a, and review of the Marvin Heritage District Small Area Plan.
Alright, so, put in your guys' packets was a draft of these small area plans for the Marvin Heritage District. Just to kind of, you know, go over this again, this is being created as, just kind of an extra step to build a, to, to help build kind of one compliance with now the state and what 160 requires. It, you know, any type of formal adopted plans that we have helps build the foundation of what the ordinance is, ordinance states. Typically you have the plan created first, or the recommendations within the specific plan that kind of derive what, what's in the ordinance, we did it backwards. And so it was just recommended that we do a small area plan to incorporate, you know, some of the language in the Form Based Code, provide some recommendations, especially from the residential aesthetic design and so on, but there's nothing in here, you know, all this language is, was derived specifically what was already put in the Form Based Code, as well as just some of the additional stuff is just part of a typical type of plan, you'll see this in our land use plan when it talks about civic engagement and, and all of that, is it's just standard process to be compliant with the state. One of the biggest things, as I mentioned, part of the reason that Form Based Code got kind of held up back in June is that council wanted some of that residential design and have some of those standards, and they didn't have that authority with the just conventional zoning district, which was what the original MHD was going to be. With that being said, the MHD, the Form Based Code is going to be proposed as a conditional zoning district, so, take back Marvin Gardens here, and it kind of have a, basically the Form Based Code will be the base and outlines of that, and that's what they come and propose, and anything residentially or anything even commercially, there'll be a set of aesthetic designs, kind of like Publix and all that, that they have to then, you know, council will approve, and that's what then they kind of hold by. So in this plan, it's kind of, that's what some of the recommendations are, is this is used as kind of a guiding document to help understand the creation of what the code is, as well as some of the, you know, design standards and other recommendations that, once again, has already been derived in the code, but it's kind of just a, it's doing this in the back end. Tom, was there anything you would like to add about that?
Thank you, Hunter. No, I think you did a good overview. The Form Based Code is such a large body of work that it's really demanded a little bit more in the long range plan, your, your comprehensive land use plan twenty-twenty. So that's why we built this small area plan to basically set the stage for the more detailed regulation, but in the form of the small area plan, it's just more broad based descriptions of what's to come in the code. So academically, that's what we're doing, and legally, it puts the village in better shape. And then from a sort of a developer, user point of view, it's helpful to see everything in one place, the small area plan, instead of having to go through the, the whole long range plan or comprehensive plan to find the some pieces of the Heritage District. So, someone could pick up the small area plan and the Form Based Code and go to work on designing and preparing an application for the village to review. That's all I could add to it, Hunter.
Yeah, and, and just, once again, kind of what Tom was stating, is that the goal here is, is that if it's a property owner or a developer, whatever, can one start with, you know, looking at, taking the Form Based Code and even this plan and using it as a guiding document to build their, their site specific or application for, for their proposal on these lots. It's got a set of standards in there, and, and one the plan, and then what the proposed Form Based Code would- there and one the plan and then what the proposed Form Based Code would be, is going to be, that once again, it's, it's kind of wanting to be straightforward, very easy to understand, easy to interpret for all parties. It needs to be kind of a, that's one thing, you know, me coming in when I did and taking the Form Based Code, there was a lot of things in there that were kind of unclear, not straightforward to me. And I'm, I'm in the field. And so it, it was kind of very tough to really maybe, you know, as maybe somebody on an outsider point of view, to really pick it up and understand it. And, and that's kind of the intent of what this district is trying to do is a lot, we want a lot of the prep work, site work, all of that stuff for the application to be done on the front end. So you don't have a 10 year process like you do with Marvin Gardens to an extent. It's, it's straightforward already what's there in the ordinance and the set of, you know, the recommendations that are in the plan. And so they, they can tie that into saying, oh, this is what they, this is what the village or this committee or, you know, whoever wanted in the, in the plan and those recommendations. And then they can, they can see that direct reference in that, in the Form Based Code that will be brought to you guys probably next month.
So this is essentially an executive summary of the Form Based Code.
As Austin stated, this is an executive summary of the Form Based Code. It kind of simplifies and keeps saying simple. And then the code is the actual ordinance and regulations of the district. And the Form Based Code isn't, will be presented, the updated draft of the Form Based Code is intended to be presented to you guys next month at your meeting. So these are two separate documents. This is to be proposed to be a standalone plan that is approved by council, but always is also to be included with our, our land use plan. So then anytime, time in the future as the district gets established or the, actually the council goes to make their motion to establish the district, it would be consistent with, with the land use plan and all adopted plans. That's kind of some of the intent here behind this.
Now, is this, it's a, does not, it's, it's a standalone document or supplement to the land use plan, you know?
Yes.
But I mean, it, it doesn't become part of, it's.
It, well, it will be a kind of an amendment. The, all the recommendations that are in this plan are strictly from what was already adopted in our land use plan last November, outside of one, which it was.
Yeah, there was a verbiage change.
Yeah, but for the most part, it's the recommendations and stuff there, it pretty much is like the guided document on kind of what derives those recommendations. The intent is it for it to be a standalone document, but it would, and Tom, correct me if I'm saying this wrong. It will be a standalone document, but it will also be kind of adopted as an amendment to our overall land use plan or amended as a document within that. Did I say that?
That's correct. It is part of the comprehensive plan and has all the powers and authorities and public hearing and public comment and citizen engagement portions of what the comprehensive plan requires. So it is 100% part of your plan. It's just that many communities, if you start to study an area really closely, it's time to prepare a small area plan. And the state statutes, 160D even talks about small area plans, kind of a conventional technique that we're using here. One other thing I think I'll add is what we're also doing is adding in two, two documents that the village that you all worked hard on, the 2019 community survey report is appendix A of this small area plan, which is also part of the comprehensive plan, and appendix B, which is the charrette that was held kind of early in COVID. Hopefully, I think many of you participated in that. When you adopt reports such as these, especially that survey report as part of your comprehensive plan, what that allows you to do is dip into the, dip into those reports and maps and community values when you're evaluating a project. So if you might have policies in this plan, but if you recall, I remember from back, you know, in March or whenever we had the charrette, there was a lot of interest in a particular area for a Greenway Trail connection or something. You can crack open that charrette document and use some of that for your, your motions and findings to sort of leverage some positions that you want the developer to work with you on. So these facilities also become part of your long range plan when this small area plan is adopted. So if you haven't gotten familiar with those, weren't spending a while just to look at them, they're hot linked in the small area plan and, and just go through those. They were, they're still very relevant and it was, so we're both very well done and it wouldn't have made sense to copy and taste all that material into here. And it was also conducted by some really good professionals. So just feel where that's also part of what the small area plan contains.
I will like to share a few things with you guys in this small area plan. Okay, hold on. Let me get this pulled up here. So I will mention to this went to the MHD committee a few weeks ago. They recommended approval. There are a few things kind of pointed out, like some certain definition or verbiage. I can't recall. Tom and I met on this last week. It's not changing anything. I don't know if it's, this draft doesn't have some of the stuff we talked about, correct, Tom? As it just like the definite, I mean, I know it's got the form based for the definition, but certain just minor verbages or added kind of information.
I really think the questions we got started to be back at the Form Based Code, which, which is still a work in progress.
Yeah.
I don't really recall, but I'll get through my notes if anything recommended for revision for this document. We did have one question, a couple of questions from a committee member and he chose not to go along with recommending approval. So it wasn't unanimous, you know, we, you know, full disclosure, I want to point that out. It was pretty under the nature of Hunter will get back to me on the questions I have. So I really can't, you know, vote for it, but everybody else voted for it to proceed.
Yeah.
And there weren't any kind of add on motion with the condition that we revised it to that. So I think any discussion or some questions we got had to do with the Form Based Code more than this small area plan.
Yeah, and I'll add on to that to Tom is basically the one person who did not vote for it is one of the property owners and he was getting this mixed up with the Form Based Code. And I've already talked to him, but like I said, these are two separate documents. And so that was the only kind of vote that was not for the recommendation. The one thing I do would like to point out here is when you adopt these plans, you, you look at future land use. There's a future land use map incorporated into this plan, which will then also be an amendment adopt or updated to our overall future land use map. And essentially, this is everything, this map shows the subsections that was all derived in the Form Based Code. The two big changes here is that we took out, or one of the, one of the things that Tom and I are working on in the Form Based Code is that there was that proposal for existing building as a sub district within that. Essentially, what that did is it kept, it said that the building and the property had remained the same and a lot of the uses were special uses, meaning you would have to go through those special or.
This is the Owens and Philbrick properties.
Yeah, what used to be conditionings permit, but now special use permit process. With these being conditional zonings, it would be per property. We made, the recommendation is that those properties are quote unquote mixed use, because what that does is if you, in the Form Based Code, the proposal for the existing only was essentially all the, all the uses that are permitted in the mixed use were special uses in the existing. And so since it's got to go through that process, it opens that up. And once again, this has to go through a rezoning process and that will be kind of outlined next month or in the Form Based Code we'll go over. And so that one, and then the church parking lot property, once again, this is all future land use. That was kind of a recommend, that was kind of something that Tom and I worked on as a recommend to, to put in this because it kind of creates connectivity between the venture property and the Owens property here. It's an essential parking lot that yes, the church owns and yes, the use is civic, but long term and looking at the future land use. The intent of why we put that as mixed use is that it could be a parking lot utilized for one of the, for mainly maybe the Owens thing or just even public parking or something along those lines. It's not, you know, that's, that's just why it was kind of intended to, to, that was the only other change. That's kind of the things that you're looking at different from what was proposed in the Form Based Code compared to this.
So the only thing that really, I know this is talking about the uses in general, you know, generic terms. And I guess the Form Based Code is really what we're going to have to dig into. But definitely the mixed use areas are the most concerning to me because I don't really know what that's going to look like. And it has the most, it's going to have the biggest impact on the surrounding land, landowners. So, I mean, are we approving, what are we, are we approving this?
You're rec, so once again, this is separate from the Form Based Code.
No, I get that.
So tonight would be a recommendation for council to approve this. There'd be a public hearing for the adoption of the plan. All this plan is taking is, once again, it's, it took the language from the Form Based Code and, or the base generic language, as you were just saying, and puts it in a plan as a general kind of overview, executive summary, as Austin states, for the district. The actual Form Based Code, it's intended to be brought to you guys next month. And that's where all the regulations, definitions, uses, all of that is, is in that in the Form Based Code. This has, this has no regulating authority to an extent. This is, uses a guiding document that council, planning board, everybody looks at to see consistency with what's being proposed and so on. And since the Form Based Code was kind of already derived, all of this pretty is, is consistent with what was being proposed. So.
Can I ask a question? I'm looking at a, I know what you're talking about because I have it in my head, but I'm looking at a gray screen right now in front of me. Is, is everybody else online seeing a gray screen or is it just my computer?
Oh gosh.
Everybody else seeing a gray screen?
Yes.
We're all there.
You might, you might just, you might just not be sharing our rates.
No, thank you. I thought it was my computer and I was fiddling around with it.
You're losing your mind, Bob.
Okay, thank you.
So.
It's easy for him.
Well, we pulled that screen out. Hunter, I've got it up that, oh, beautiful. That's what I've got a question about.
Thank you.
I have never fully understood how we decided, we collectively, how we decided what was mixed use, what was residential only. I, I mean, I, I fully understand the civic and I fully, and I, well, no, I don't fully understand the commercial only either, but I don't understand how we came to that and or, and I don't know the conversations that have been had about the landowners, if they're okay with that. I.
I, I second that.
So two, yeah, so I mean, I.
Territory.
I agree with you. From my understanding, and this is kind of was one of my issues with the Form Based Code when it was being proposed, is the original intent was to go ahead and rezon all those properties. And they would be rezoned to those. And that was, that was created through conversations with those property owners on specifically what they wanted to do on their, their property or whatever. Now, with it now being kind of a conditional zoning district overall and within those boundaries, this map is kind of that guiding principle, meaning if an application came through, I mean, let's take one of those commercials properties. And, and the reason to kind of segue into your other question about those being commercial, part of those rent, part of the reason from my understanding on why those were commercial is because there's not enough room for them to do any, like, it can't be really, it's not, it's not large enough quote unquote to be used for mixed use, like a some type of multi-building type commercial site. As in what I mean by that is very low impact and maybe have some type of component of residential there. So that's where that, some of that got derived. The other mixed use is the intent is, that's where you have your mixed, the, the term mixed use is mixing commercial uses with residential. Honestly, this whole district overall is a mixed use develop, is a mixed use district because you're, you're taking in residential along with some of that, or what the intent is of that light commercial. It's just, this is in that recommendation where residential only or certain things like that.
But who's, I mean, I guess, I never fully understood like who's, based on whose recommendation? Is this our recommendation? Cause I mean, I, I'm not qualified to make this up.
So from my understanding, it was previous staff in conjunction with those property owners specifically on what they kind of would like to see for their property.
Correct.
That is where, like I said, I didn't really love the idea. I think that that's, and it's, still that's the kind of the intent. But now with the whole district being conditional zoning, if we get an application, if it's for the residential only and that's what they're proposing, well, then it would be consistent with this plan. If we got, don't freak out, I'm talking with this one.
Careful, careful. This is for.
I fight.
If we got some type of random application for rezoning for a target on that residential only section.
I'd be like, praise God. I'm kidding.
Council would take that, exactly. Council would take that into consideration. It would not be consistent with this plan and this map.
So let me ask you this then. Hunter, if you don't love this, if you don't like this, as our village planner, if you're not in love with this, why would you submit it forward to us?
So I.
Why don't we take this as an opportunity to reconfigure and rethink if you don't, and I, and I'm asking you that not to, not to be aggressive or play devil's advocate or whatever, but like, true, because I don't fully understand this part. And if, if you don't necessarily believe this is the right way for us to go, why would we do this?
So I'm not necessarily saying now it's not the right way to go. I'm saying if it would have been rezoned that way to where those properties were then rezoned already to this, I think you kind of locked yourself in. What this does is with it being a future land use map, this does not mean that these properties are going to be rezoned at tomorrow or any of that. It's, it's a guiding document. In my past job, when you look at future land use maps, you're looking at kind of the surrounding and existing uses, as well as maybe what's the best and highest use for that property. With that being said, I'm okay with this as a future land use map because it, it's, it's a guide direction and that's kind of some of the things. But what this does is it does provide some of that flexibility on, once again, where those property owners kind of say, hey, this is what we want to do on our property. But we can't force them to do that tomorrow. And somebody could sell their property, whatever. Somebody could then come in and say, hey, we want to do this. And it'd be slightly different than what was already kind of recommended or what was put together in this plan. And so that's why this is a map that's in this plan as a guide and recommendation. You look at the existing kind of civic and all of that, most likely that's not going to change because that's an existing thing. The mixed use, once again, the intent there is that it provides flexibility of what those property owners want to do with their property in the long run. They can stay residential forever. We can't force them to do anything, but if somebody comes with some type of mixed use component with the light commercial and all of that, then that's where that comes into play. This also does tie into what was proposed in the Form Based Code with the permitted uses and the subsections. But I, I'm right there.
Right, which I.
I'm right there with you.
That's a cool thing too, because we, we quite frankly, we just made those up too. And I, I mean, we had lots of conversations, but again, this was, you know.
We're playing with someone else's display of things.
Correct. And that's something that Tom and I are working on currently is actually looking at those uses and, and one adding definitions, because there was no definition in the Form Based Code that actually defined any of those uses. So there was kind of, you know, some could have been really open for interpretation. But as well as looking at, I, I like to look at some other, I, I don't like to recreate the will.
That one specifically disallows.
Now, I like to look at other ordinances or some other place that have had some type of success or something along with what we're trying to create and see what they're kind of doing and seeing if they like it or what, what works well and works not. So there could be certain uses in that. And once again, that will kind of be all of next month's discussion about what this Form Based Code language specifically as we, it's intended to present you guys an updated draft with that, having some major difference in those permitted uses and so on.
Can I ask a question?
So, but.
We'll have one.
Okay, sorry. So, but then before we approve the potential small area plan map, don't I need to know then what the definitions of some of those businesses or not businesses for that mixed use area need to be?
Not necessarily, because it's, this is a future land use map, because if you look at a generic future land use map of any other municipality, it will have, it will have some, take, I'm from Hickory. There's residential components that were on, their future land use maps that were identified as downtown or commercial use, commercial. That's a very broad subject because all this is is a guiding document for when council approves the rezoning. And it's, it's kind of a broad thing and it's a use as a guide. Nothing's specifically changing, because there's an application there. But council can still, even if it. But council can still, even if it, I'll, let me just add one last thing, is even if we got a rezoning application here, they look at this as a guide, and it can be consistent or inconsistent, and that's kind of up to them to make that legislative decision, if they want to approve something. So even if.
So, could the whole area be green, and us just say that this is the heritage district area?
So that's what, that's what, that, this is specifically for this district, because this is what was derived prior, and that's, once again, my understanding was that we didn't want to freak people out and change a lot of things, and this is what was kind of derived from input from those property owners, as well as what you guys have seen before. On the future land use map, overall, the Marvin one, it does just have this area identified as Marvin Heritage District. This is just the site specific to kind of give that guiding principle and recommendation.
But by guid, but by guidance, you're saying we are setting the future parameters, right? We're not saying guidance, we're saying like, this is the plan, right? And then we are either, if it's in conjunction with the plan, then council can go forward and approve things, because it's part of the plan, and if it's against the plan, then they have to decide.
Yes.
So, so, can I jump in here for a second? So, I never understood why, I mean, based on everything we've just talked about, why do we even have commercial-only on here? Why is it not just all mixed-use civic and residential? Because, like, for instance, that, either one of those properties that are listed in red, right, they've been used as.
Residential.
Residential, so it's like, why would that still not be an option for them? And I know the landowners are looking to do commercial properties there, but like, that's the current landowner, that's, you know what I mean?
Correct, so, just to clarify.
So why are we shooting ourselves in the foot?
We're not shooting ourselves in the foot, because if they want to keep it residential, the underlying, they have to apply for a rezoning to get the MHD this specific zoning, meaning that the existing zoning district of, all of this is already zoned current residential, and would have to conform with what our, our district states. And so, if they want to keep it residential, if any of these properties want to keep it residential for as long as they want, we can't force them to do anything different, and it's not, we're not rezoning their property. They come to, they, when ready, come to us to rezonate.
So what's the difference, difference then between mixed-use and commercial? Because you can do commercial on mixed-use.
Mixed-use allows for residential.
But it also allows for commercial, so.
So that's where, in this, and Tom, I mean, Tom, if you want to chime in, feel free.
Because he started dealing with those women.
No, well, the one thing I'm gonna add is like, that Tom and I discussed, is if, in this Form Based Code draft, it talked about the mixed-use, and the intent was that it's a larger tracks, and it's intended to have commercial on the front, and some type of potential residential component, not to exceed 30% of the total acreage somewhere on the property.
Okay, thank you for that reminder.
With that being said, the, part of the reason we left it as commercial is that, yes, we took like the Owens and all of that, because it's a smaller track, like, you can't, it's not actually a larger development track for a mixed-use facility, or mixed-use type development, but it does provide that property owner those type of flexibility for mixed-use. Why those other three are not mixed-use, yeah, I mean, that's what I'm saying, the whole district as a whole is kind of a mixed-use district, because you can, residential will be a permitted use, and commercial will be a permitted use. The problem is, with now doing a site-specific or conditional zoning, this is kind of that guide, and meaning, if you did the whole mixed, if you did the whole district as a mixed-use kind of thing, and you didn't have these parameters, even though the intent of like, take the residential-only portion, is that it's residential-only, well, somebody can pick up this plan and see, oh, it's mixed-use, and once that language is derived, that's how they, they can, you know, apply for rezoning, and kind of propose whatever's compliant with that mixed-use development there. And so, this map, as well as like, the plan, was kind of taken in with a lot of that consideration, and the, like I said, the term mixed-use is a very kind of broad term, the specifics of what is allowed in that specific subsection will be in the Form Based Code. But.
That, what you're saying, what you're, I understand what you're saying. I think what's sticking in my craw is this, this one commercial property at the end, and I understand, I understand historically why it was deemed commercial, but you're talking about a commercial property backing up to buy-right homes.
Well, all of the commercial would be a thing about it.
Yeah, I just, I know, the prob, the problem is with, with, with like the Crane House, it's so forward, right, that you've got such a huge buffer between that, and, but this one, like this, this thinner one, doesn't have as much buffer between that residential, those residential properties and the road.
Like I said, when this, the actual specifics of that, there, I mean, once again, the Form Based Code has been amended to, you know, amend, update some of those buffers, some of those uses, all of that. And so, if an applicant came to rezonate one of those commercial properties to the MHD commercial-specific conditional zoning district, it would actually just be the MHD conditional zoning, but they would look at this plan, or the council would look at this plan, and that's kind of also the applicant would look and say, hey, it's identified as commercial, that's what they're trying to do. With that being said, if it's any type of, the existing building can stay, and they can upfit it to meet certain, that type of use, some of that's out, what was being outlined in the Form Based Code. For some reason, if they have to add any type of thing, then the new structure has to comply with what's in the ordinance, in terms of setbacks, buffer requirements, all of that. So the existing structure can be outfitted to commercial, but if there's not a structure there, then it would have to, the building itself would have to be derived from what was in the Form Based Code, and like I said, that, that's, we can get into those specifics next month. Because some of that, like I said, Tom and I are currently working on this draft, and what needs to be, and adding certain things, and clarifying certain things, and all of that.
Yeah, I just, I guess I, I don't know what the setbacks are, I know there's a house there, it looks really close to the back property line, and I could see that maybe being light commercial, but not straight-up commercial as with the existing structure. But I don't, I also don't have like a plot.
Yeah, and that's where some of that, like I said, this is where, in that Form Based Code, typically the plan comes first. And so now that you guys have seen the Form Based Code and the plan, that's what I think what is kind of getting this catch-all right now, because when you have this, when you had, and in any other instance where you do the plan first, it might not be as detailed as this, it could, this, this area might just be identified as Marvin Heritage District, and that's kind of what it was in our land use plan. Then, then you do a small area, and then that's kind of taken back from feedback on public input, and that's what's hit on in this, in the small-area-plan draft, of talking about the public input and public engagement from those property owners. So that's how a lot of that was derived. But the specifics and the regulations come typically after the plan. All the plan is a guiding document and recommendations. It has no governing, regulating authority of that district until the language is approved, which will be what is presented to you guys next month.
Normally, this is adopted, this normally, this would be adopted long before you have a Form Based Code or something like that in place, but we did it at our.
I, I, the only thing is, I think that this is, and, and I've always felt this way, that it is, some of this is contradictory to each other, like Philbrook property, and then that red property, that one, that, that's like right near, like on Marvin School.
Like I said, that's, once again, I, you, Tom, and correct me if I'm wrong, we never understood, one, why those two, those two were identified as existing buildings.
I, I can tell you why, because that's, right now, that the Philbrook property bumps up to rural, and you couldn't have a commercial, a straight-up commercial property, because of transitional density, and so they, they made it purple. But it's the exact same situation, basically, as the other, as the red property, it would, it's still, they're still gonna try and zone it light commercial, it's still gonna be commercial, so if, if they try and, you know what I mean, like an office building, well, I think that that other property could be the exact same thing, so why is it not purple? Like, why is it red? So like, this is where I just think there's just inconsistencies that feel, that they're not, they're not, they're just inconsistent.
Trust me, reading the Form Based Code, that's where, that's part of the stuff we're running into.
Yeah, because this, some of the stuff was being done a favor.
That's what we are, I mean, that's a lot of the changes Tom and I are currently making. But, like I said, I don't have, I don't have a full answer on those regulations yet, because we're still working on them. All this is, is a plan that kind of is an overview.
And I, I think the plan is fine, it's the map that is, that I just think is not, is not ready for primetime.
But this is the same.
I disagree with you, I also think where the definition, where we had mixed-use heritage district, it talks about developments needing to be no more than 30% of the total should be for residential uses. And when I look at the size of that one, the, the two purples that are south of Newtown, that's gonna be a lot of space, so if you're just gonna use it for commercial along the frontage of Newtown, and only 30% of the rest of that can be for residential use, there's probably, with the definition, or we're intentionally keeping it to very little residential.
Well, that, one of those, actually, both of those properties rich back up to rural communities, so.
Okay.
There is a, there is a transitional density issue there, like, so you could have commercial on the front, but then you have to have, technically, you have to have buy-right before you go to rural, so, while what was planned in the, in the last code was not buy-right, um, yeah, it's, I think, I think it's, 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 it feels, go ahead, sorry.
I don't know, that's, I didn't make the step on you, but it, it's just plain elusive, because when, if I look with the mixed-use piece along Waxaw Marvin, where's the front? Because you have a piece that's along Newtown, but then you have a much larger piece that affronts the Waxaw Marvin Road. So it's, it's, again, it's a little bit, we're a little bit loose with that, but I understand what you're saying.
And to, to, yeah, I'm trying to reiterate here, the reason those two were made as mixed-use was mainly because the intent of what was originally being performed in the Form Based Code. If they want to do some type of commercial that, if they wanted to use it as office space, or something like that, but it's not, it's not allowed in the current residential district, and, but it was intended, if it goes through the special-use permit process in the Form Based Code Draft 3 that was last presented to you guys in June. Now with it being mixed-use, council can take, when they get there, I mean, and planning board as well will see the application, make their recommendation to council, the intent is there, it's like, once the Form Based Code gets approved, and you guys will see that permitted uses and all of that, then those properties would be able to come and rezonate if they would, would like, and let's just take Mr. Owens' property right across, if he wants to, I mean, put in office space for a brew pub, that comes to you guys, and then goes to council for approval. What you then have to look at is, does that use meet the, is it compliant with what, what the, what is going to be in the Form Based Code as in regards to buffering, or, or parking, and all of that? And if not, then you guys can recommend not approval, and then council will most likely follow suit, because that's, that's one thing that comes into play here, is especially parking, buffering of the surrounding uses, and all of that. But that was the thing, is that the existing building in the previous proposed draft, the existing building can stay the same, and then they could apply for a special use, and, I mean, I, I mean, there they are, right there, I mean, they're, but they're all permitted in mixed-use, and now with it having to be approved as a conditional zoning district, it's essentially the same type of process that would, that it would go through, but would actually, kind of actually more authority and regulation. Because if it's a special use, in, pretty much legally, if it's a special use, and you have those specific requirements outlined, unless you have those specific additional requirements outlined in your ordinance, once, it kind of gets back into the same thing with, we were talking about subdivision, if it meets, if there's nothing there, you don't have much say on why you could deny and approve.
Yeah.
This way, with it being conditional zoning, they can just deny the rezoning application, don't have to give a reason, and we're not gonna be held liable for any type of legal thing. So that's kind of, once again, why the intent of those two were put as mixed-use, just mainly from the greater context of what maybe can happen on that property. It's not intended that those buildings get torn down, whatever, it's that, it's opening, it's opening up the uses that were already kind of provided in the, in the Draft 3, just with the kind of a different process.
I think we're gonna need some time with, so, I don't know what your timeline is for approval of the, of the Form Based Code, but it would be nice to be able to schedule that over two sessions, so that we're not, you know, that we have more, we've got plenty of time to talk about it, go through it, sit with it, come back to it, you know, for at least two meetings, before we go to, to move to approve or, or reject. Trying to get, trying to get, this is so important, this Form Based Code, that trying to get through it in one meeting, when we've got other things on the agenda, is, is like, is unfair, so if, if we could, if we could, you know, stretch it out, I would really appreciate that. I don't know about the rest of the board, some of you might not want to stretch it out, but like, it's just, it's too important to try and cram through one meeting.
Well, and that's, like I said, I am kind of right there with you, I'm not sure, I've had meetings with council members individually to go through certain things, and what was being proposed, because it was about to be adopted, outside of what was the residential design standards. There were other things in there that were not addressed, defined, all that, that I'm like, whoa, was this really looked at? And so I agree, my concern is some of this maybe was not fully reviewed and given input. With that being said, I'm not sure, once again, through your guys' experience on how much you guys reviewed Draft 3, all of that, but the intent is mainly, we're, we're updating per council's recommendation or guidance on one of the residential design standards, and then essentially other stuff to be one complying with the state, with 160D and other things, as well as updating definitions, and updating processes, and updating, trying to make it actually easier to understand. And my goal is to probably highlight all this, so you guys can focus on that, but feel free to go through the other stuff, that's.
See, you weren't here when we were doing the land use plan. We would, we went through that thing with a fine-tooth comb, I cannot even tell you how many times, it was maddening sometimes, how many times we went through it, but.
Four years.
I, I, yeah, well, I wasn't, I wasn't on board for that whole time, but like, I, I personally, as a, as a group, or I would like to go through page by page, just to kind of talk about what this means, you know, because there, there, it's just so packed in there, and we're, this is not our jobs, like, it's, you know what I mean, like, it, there might be things that we don't know we should know, that could go through, that we would have not been happy with, had we fully understood what was being written there. So, I don't know, that's just, I, I just personally want to dig into it, I don't know about the rest of the board. I'd love to hear y'all's thoughts.
Well, I have to, as somebody new to the board, I certainly feel that, understanding it, digesting it, being able to look at each district, and, and understanding how we're going to apply it, because from frontages, buildings, whatever civic spaces that were put out there, I certainly want to vote, or write something, and then vote and approve it, that's gonna be for the good of all of the town. So I, for one, I don't know what the council's timeline initially on this was, but I certainly will agree with you, that I'd like to be able to digest it, understand it, chew through it, and, and again, with everybody else on the team, put down together what we feel is going to be robust and versatile, and, and right for the village.
Thanks, Rich.
You're, you're right what you say, because as Hunter has alluded to, we were on the verge, council, of looking at, in the work session, adopting whatever we were looking at, and thank goodness for Tom, who was able to kind of educate us and say, uh, you need to look at this thing a little bit closer, okay, there's some inconsistencies, and some of the things that were in there, and thank goodness Hunter jumped in as well, so I'm giving the credit to both of them, they kind of said, you know, you gotta watch out now for square footage, and what you're thinking would be the minimum for homes and residential, that sort of thing. And it was like, wow, okay, we didn't even, didn't even know that, think of that, so yeah, there is a little bit of fine-tooth combing that's gonna need to go through this. Tom, I'm, I'm gonna take advantage of you being on the line right now, and, and ask you a question, okay? Being retired, I don't go out with dominions in the morning time, God bless you all that have to, so, at eight o'clock in the morning to eight-thirty, I don't know what in the world you're going on throughout there, okay?
so at eight o'clock in the morning to eight-thirty, I don't know what in the world you're going on throughout there, okay? I'm sitting home still brewing up my coffee, but one day I had to go on a certain, never in a certain place, and it was about maybe nine or five, nine-ten, and I'm at the end of Marvin Road, I'm ready to make a right-hand turn, and I want to tell you, the traffic was absolutely, now I know why I stay home and brew coffee during that period of time. The traffic was just absolutely horrendous, I was, I was honestly pissed, and, and I thought, this is exactly what is on that survey that came out, as Hunter alluded to, in 2019. And then, when, as Hunter alluded to, he kind of has educated each of us council members individually on kind of this, what everybody's, you know, talking about, the Heritage District. And when DFI came in here, that opened up a can of worms and said, well, to support this little ye olde coffee house, to support this ye olde, ye olde pancake house, you need to have residential housing, and you need to properly anchor about both sides. And now, here's a question that the Planning Board will need to deal with, please make this a priority as you, as you discuss this. Hunter has shared with us, and I'm not going to talk about numbers, but Hunter has shared with us what he's thinking should be residential housing, and it's not the same residential housing that we've got in Marvin. It's not going to be one house per acre, it's going to be one house on something smaller, okay, a smaller footprint, with a smaller square footage, which gives, this is my opinion, this Heritage District gives a good excuse to start adding density housing, as anyone would consider what is density housing. But my concern is that I'm looking at all of the residential that could possibly be, and I'm looking at, okay, and this is to support how many businesses or, like, the mixed-use, like, how many are there to support all the housing? And I'm thinking to myself, how many residents, how many houses are we talking about in this Heritage District? That will be a different, they're gonna be on a different plot, they're gonna be a different square footage than we're used to in the rest of Marvin, so my question is, here, Tom, it, it seemed to me, after I kind of left a meeting, that I thought to myself, wait a minute, this looks like this is gonna turn out to be a good excuse for a lot of residential housing. And what happened, or how, when is the pancake house gonna appear, when is the coffee shop going to appear? And I looked at the traffic that this is going to invite on top of, you know, what we already got, meaning, but how are many units, I'm not linking anybody to any map, we haven't said that. But let's just indiscriminately, let's say a hundred homes. If we put a hundred homes in this residential area, and everybody's got two cars per home, that's another two hundred cars were flooding into the area, especially coming out the mouth of Meadowbrook, you know, Meadowlar, rather, Meadowbrook, Meadowlar, coming out there. Is there any kind of a balance that the Planning Board and even the council will have to deal with when you're looking at residences versus whatever it is, mixed-use, commercial on those pieces of property, or just pure commercial? Is there any kind of a balance, or can we go block-sided and put too much residential? Do you understand my question?
Yeah, and, uh, let me say I'm not a transportation engineer, but part of planning and when we turn to our transportation engineering disciplines, there are published trip generation rates that various densities of housing creates and, and different kinds of commercial uses and mixed uses based on their, their size, ranges, and it's, could be different times of day. So some communities have a, a requirement to provide calculations of what their impacts are gonna be, traffic impact analysis, and they turn those over to the local government, elected officials and planning boards, that's part of this, a little, um, there's usually a threshold, because that can get expensive to hire someone, so if you're converting, you know, a house into a coffee shop, it's probably not gonna click in that transportation engineer fee, but a restaurant would likely, if they adopted something like that, so that's one way to do it. And that's, that's one of the, um, because one of the elements that would be part of a strategic plan, this Form-Based Code, this small area plan is just really, I don't even know percentage-wise, but the, the full, project that a strategic plan would undertake, there's a lot more to it, like the industrial service district, the, um, um, including businesses, marketing this area, um, and, uh, things like that. So probably this trip generation rate and impact analysis would be something to think about, whether it's in the short term being now. We are, what Hunter and I are doing now is, there really wasn't much of a review process dictated in the previous version, just to support, um, Hunter and I stepped in, so we are working on a, a series of reviews steps, and that, that could be one, if you're interested, um, to give you a long answer, but yeah, you could tip the scales one way or the other, too far, and you would not like the results if it was left unchecked. What this does do is, as opposed to all residential, which does have an early morning and sort of traditional after-work gift, when you do have mixed uses and some commercial, those are usually gonna happen later in the morning and later in the evening, so they're kind of compatible, so you do want the mix, actually, that's, that's a helpful thing. You know, if people are going to dinner at seven o'clock, for the rush hour traffic to die down, and if it's conveniently located, you're driving less, and you happen to be putting money into your own local economy and having possibly your own, you know, sons and daughters or relatives in those places, or maybe your own business that you've opened, so anyways, um, yeah, you could tip the scales too far one way or the other, and that's why it's often smart to try to design, um, sounds like you used to, compact vendors of, um, convenient merchandise and retail and placemaking, which are proud of, for their community, that it's functional. And, but yeah, you don't wanna sign up for headaches to add more and more traffic. What, what this can do, and what, um, Robert was so good at, is explaining, we can do things to the road to help calm the traffic, and at some point, people that are driving through this area that have alternate ways, they'll start to get uncomfortable that they're seeing a lot of pedestrians crossing and joining the areas and do greenway trails, and they'll start peeling off and going another way to make those meetings, they're not gonna keep coming through here if they don't need to. So it's sort of an attitude adjustment, too, I've done that myself, you know, if I'm running late, I might not go through the prettiest part of town, I might run around through an industrial area. So, um, and then I'll, if I change, you know, if it's cleared up later, so it, the behavior also, it's not just calculation, but it's how to get people who wanna be down there, and then to some degree to serve people that don't need to be there. I hope to answer some of your questions.
It does, yeah, and I mean, the, the Heritage District was always kind of considered as a, a byproduct of it, would've been to be able to take control of the stretch of land, basically, between roundabouts to roundabouts, and slow down the traffic to twenty-five miles an hour, maybe make it so pedestrian-friendly that it, yes, it would've warded off everybody coming from South Carolina to Waxaw and vice versa. But it was very interesting, it crossed my mind when I looked at it on Monday, and I said, you know, in terms of what we're trying to do here, I'm thinking, I don't, I'm just saying, this is only my opinion, I hope we don't chew, chew ourselves in the foot here, you know, we're sitting here going, we're trying to do something good, but at one point, you know, are we going to, just in our own local community, just our own, our own people, our own folks, um, you know, make it difficult, but, uh, you know, from, from the standpoint of traffic? But anyway, you did, thank you very much.
Okay, I also would like to clarify, just real quick, that in the plan and in the ordinance, there is, it's not being proposed that the density is increasing in the, in the district. What, what is happening is that providing flexibility on lot size to actually promote conservation and, um, putting certain, I mean, density of housing in certain area, but it's not going to increase the density per the district, it's not going to surpass any of that, that's a recommendation of this plan, and that would be in the ordinance, just to clarify there.
So-
Good, thank you.
So, can I just say one thing, though, like, I, I, I actually liked the idea of conservation neighborhoods, I don't really have a problem with the smaller lot size, if it's conserving park space, green, green space, but I, I think what, what has always baffled me about this plan is that in order to set businesses up to succeed, because there is a, there is a, a, a section of Marvin that want a commercial district, a heritage district, we're actually going to then go against a lot of what people also don't want that they said about in the survey. So they don't want patio homes, they were strictly against that, they don't want mixed-use, uh, buildings, and I'm not saying that we're doing that, we're doing like, you know, residential over retail, I, I don't think any of that's being proposed, but there were certain things that most, almost everyone in the survey was like, we do not want this, right? We were really, the Planning Board was very excited about conservation, and we put a, specifically put a question about it in there, and it got slammed, it was really surprising, um, but, so a lot of the things that, that I feel like we're proposing that need to be done in order for this to be successful go directly against what people did, they do not want these things, based on the survey. So, it's like, what, what are we doing? Like, why, you know, why are we going to all this trouble to set something up? Like, which, which one is, has the bigger negative?
Well, I, I think maybe that they were assuming that patio homes meant higher density.
Well, that's not, no, 'cause that's not what we said, remember, we crafted that, like, we spent forever on that language, it would not increase density, um, I mean, go, yeah, go back-
There was a question that, if I recall, there's a question that's talked about lot size in general, but then it says, if the density's not, and if the density is remained at one house per acre for a total development, what type of housing would you like to see? And then patio homes are actually in favor of that. It was, it was like a fifth, it, it, I've got the survey right here, but we, I don't-
I wanna return that part.
Yeah, the way the question read-
I know, I know what they were, people were very much against the age-restricted housing.
It says, in developments that set aside land for conservation purposes, it says, thirty-eight respondents felt that a single-family home in small lots was appropriate, so single-family on small homes. Patio homes being example age-restricted dwelling was thirty-one. So, that's where it talked about conservation, but then it talked, there was another question, I think, that was derived. A majority of the respondents were not in favor of increasing density, but then, I think the next question, or maybe I'm getting this mixed up, but it was essentially, there was no-
Two patio homes, I just don't understand why people would be against that. With age-restricted homes, you're gonna have less cars during rush hour traffic, you're gonna be paying at the schools, because you're gonna be paying taxes, they don't have kids, and they're going to schools. And, and to me, I, I just don't understand, again, why people wouldn't want that.
I know, Ri- Rich, I think, a lot, and there were people on the, on the Planning Board at that time who were really looking for something like that, because they wanted to age in place, but there was a pretty big backlash against it in the survey, so it's like, you know, yeah, I, I totally get you, like, I, I, I understand that, um.
Well, and that's where, once again, that's where Tom, that's currently what, you know, I met with council and to get certain, I, I met with every council member individually to get certain feedback on certain things. A lot of this is being derived into all of that, and that's what kind of Bob was referring to. Uh, but that's what Tom and I are currently working on, is to kind of create all of this to honestly try to, one, be consistent, make sense, not contradict each other, not be, I mean, some of the things in here were not even practical or doable, and that's what, what I picked up and had to, had to kind of work through here, um, with that being said-
I mean, you have to work it out for you.
Yeah, with that being said, that, like, yes, part of that was, in that DFI study, it talked about higher density, whatever, to support the housing. That's not what's being recommended, it's recommended on some flexibility to maybe, whatever, where you honestly, where it's creating better development in general, if it's conservation, but it's not necessarily increasing the density.
Right.
And so, that, that's like, that's kind of what we're working on and what some of the feedback was.
Can I see your survey?
Yeah.
I wanna see if I can find it.
But, I, you know, just because we have been here about two hours, and I have to drive back from Patriots tonight.
Oh, what?
Yeah.
Are you living here?
I do, um, I would like to try focusing back on the small area plan, and, once again, it's just the plan itself, everything about regu- the regulatory ordinances in, in regards to definitions, uses, setbacks, dense, all of that will be in the Form-Based Code that will be first presented to you guys next meeting. This is just an extra step in the process, and so I either need a motion to recommend approval, or even if you don't recommend approval, it just, it's still gonna go to council, they just need to have your recommendation in place. Unless you guys want to then recommend something else, that could-
Can we move to table it and then put it into context with everything we look at next month?
I think that's sort of counterproductive.
Yeah.
If, if it had followed the ori- you know, as, as Hunter said, this should've been done before we ever got to the, the Form-Based Code, or whatever code we adopted.
Correct, yeah, so essentially, if this plan was done first, none of those questions about, the, the thought about uses and all of that would've been derived with the ordinance, and that's kind of what comes next, so approving the pla- approving the plan is basically what should've happened first and what's kind of being recommended, that's why we're looking for that recommendation. And then the ordinance itself is where we can get into weeds of certain things.
Right, I mean, I hear you, but once we know that Schrodinger's cat's not dead, there's no way to, like, wonder anymore, you know? I guess that's where I'm struggling and I'm stuck.
Is there a way to approve the document but omit the, the colored map?
No.
No.
No, the map is, is an amendment to the land use plan, the map is part of the land use plan, it would amend the future land use map. If you separate it, you no longer have-
No, but I mean, like, the, okay, okay, 'cause you, 'cause it, because it's a small area plan, you need to know which different parcels fit under which map.
We have to define the area.
Tom and I went through this process, essentially, once again, in, in future land use maps, sometimes you just blob it. You go by what's surrounding uses, it's not tied specifically to lot lines, but then it was, you know, through some, some work there, it was said, hey, let's keep it what people are familiar with, because that was our understanding, that's what everybody's comfortable with.
Start making blob lines, it started encroaching in other areas, people get scared.
Yeah, yeah, just that we did, um, with, with, uh, through the land use, use different colors that people were familiar with seeing over the year, uh, the workshop that you all had, we did have pretty detailed notes under that map for what it's worth. And it, it just, uh, really just paints the picture that, um, these are not, they don't have an independent regulatory effect. They'll be, the boundaries will be considered by the Planning Board and Village Council when considering map amendment, rezonings. When the Planning Board and Village Council consider rezonings, it's about to be consulted. These boundary lines, external, so the outer lines, as well as the internal, between those different colors or land uses are generalized, and it's such, or not intended to be precisely aligned with parcel lines. And so, um, you know, I, I want you to have, it's kind of a, um, a balancing act. This, this gives some direction clearly for the zoning map, um, but I know that it's not typical for a property owner to see a land use map in the zoning and say, you know, I'd kind of rather do something like what's next door, is it possible to rezon, instead of, uh, this commercial, I would be better off with mixed use based on studies I've done. And they'll look at the surrounding area and what's allowed, still within this Heritage District, small area, and, um, the council and the Planning Board can kind of deliberate, okay, well, you could follow all the other rules, or maybe some other part of mixed use hasn't taken place yet, um, they'll look into those, the charrette and the survey, and finally come to a, a decision, um, might be too early to, to consider rezoning in the first year or two, something different than what's shown on this in the, the plan, so they might not wanna change colors, after all this thought went into it, but by no means do they have to re- But by no means do they have to rezone it because it's consistent with this land use plan. They can, the village council can say, it's too soon. We don't have the streets taped in or you don't have the utilities in, or we're still working on obtaining grants to do some traffic improvements. I know the general, the future land use calls for commercial here, but we are, um, we're not going to take action on your rezoning request to make that commercial right now. This is a long range plan, twenty years out, and that might happen when we're ready. And, um, they really just, the village council legislatively, they don't even have to discuss it. They just, they know, um, it's not a lot of judicial, um, action. So, um, in some cases, that's, that's better for the challenge. But, um, um, just note that note's there if that gives you any comfort and the, um, but we do have to have, we do have to have some colors in the future land use map. And we pulled back, you know, what was, what was bubbling up to the top from the year of workshops. Now, before my time too, um, but we wanted to honor, you know, the work that was done and put that in there with those tweaks that we talked about with the existing, um, problems that didn't seem to make a lot of sense. Right. Um, so, um, you know, this is, this is, it's kind of good that both are being worked on at the same time, the form-based code and the small area plan because you were kind of your left, you know, your left hand going to the right hand's doing, might say, um, as opposed to inheriting a long range plan that you didn't have a part in. Um, but it's, that helps kind of explain that, you know, these colors are here, but they're double, think of them as double, um, drawings that hard line on the parcel. That it's not to be that precise. Um, and that's the case with the village future land use map, um, village-wide, not just this area. Um, so, um, that gives you any help. And I think we, uh, may have put something like that in introduction too. We really wanted to highlight that, um, that this is a voluntary, now a voluntary application, um, property owners will have to make for conditional zoning as opposed to the village coming along and studying all this one night and everybody's gotta live with it. It happens instantly. Um, um, so, just a little background there. If you might have missed that note or if it wasn't, um, just get through that and offer that information.
Anyway.
So, map, map can be adjusted even if we approve this right now?
Map can be adjusted, but also if a rezoning comes along, let's say you adjust it to whatever. And let's say due to prior conversation with those property owners and you change one of those properties, it's future land use. It's just a guide and it's for recommendation. If you change a, a use that, like from the, if you change a mixed use to residential only or, or whatever, um, but that property owner comes with an application for a mixed use type development and council approves it, they just have to say that it's inconsistent and then it will actually update the land use map. And it can be done back, vice versa, meaning if there's a mixed use or civic or commercial property and they try to propose something else, it'll automatically update this map. This map's not tied to.
It's not set in stone.
It's not set in stone. It is a guide and like Tom was mentioning, it's for the long term. But this was what was taken into consideration at the current. I've worked with a lot of different land use plans. I always have an old couple saying, once again, why is my property identified as commercial? And it's because they're surrounded. That's what the, some of the uses are, are developing as, or that's what the vision is of a corridor or whatever. But you have to explain to them, that doesn't mean that's gonna happen. It's part of the vision and the input that's been taken in to this document. And that, and that was input taken in from those property owners.
Yeah.
So.
Anyone want to make a motion?
Yeah, make a motion, someone. One way or the other, we need a motion for something.
I, I.
I'm still reading this and again, my head is, I feel like a ping pong ball going back and forth here because this continues to say that this is intended to guide the present and future, that it's guiding principles for growth and development, but then boundary lines on here are generalized and, and are not intended to be precisely aligned with parcel lines. So there's, there's a lot being said there. And it's almost like that this document is fluid and not just going to be set in stone. That's where I'm having a, a hard time. If we're gonna say we're gonna make a motion, I'm not even sure how I'm gonna vote on this.
What, so.
I'll sort of address that. That's why there aren't planning boards and village council and citizen, um, public hearing notices. Um, if it was just a document and it was sort of a computer code to spit out a product, you wouldn't need humans. Um, but you do have that and that's encouraged and, um, and required. Um, so each step of the way, you are having people touch it, review it, talk about it, that, you know, proposals. And if it was so, um, specific in what was required, you wouldn't, you, you would just, you would say to the developer and say, this is your, your playbook. Just go do this and you'll get your permit and you'll build. Um, there are some, there's some, uh, steps where you actually just liberation and, I mean, property owner input. And when, when that happens, you want it to be a little bit flexible. So, yeah, you're exactly right. There's, it's a, it's a vision. Then you've got some drawings. Then you've got some notes that say it's generalized. But that's, um, that's the nature of planning. It's not a.
Sure. So the motion is then for what? To pass this? And, and so is council going to get this? And they can decide if they're going to adopt it and which is going to not necessarily replace, but the, the, the small district area plan, it says here, is the future land use map. What's adopted?
So the mo-, whatever motion you guys make, you're making either a recommendation to approve, making a recommendation to the council that planning board either recommends approval of the small area plan, does not recommend approval of the small area plan. And that's really kind of the only two, I mean, or recommended per, I mean.
And when the council gets it, they can do whatever the heck they want with it.
Yeah, and they're gonna have, there will be a public hearings, but, but that's what I'm saying. So that's where I, I'm not, I guess I'm confused. I'm so, I, I don't, I'm sorry I don't maybe have all the answers from, you know, some of you guys tonight, because it's like my understanding why and why some of the things were done this way was because this is what everybody was used to be in, what is, what is everybody is used to seeing and all that. And, and that's where it's like, ah, crap, I don't know if that's necessarily the case now. And, um, uh, so I, you know, I don't, I wasn't trying to complicate things any further.
You're getting mixed signals.
No, and I'm sure, I think, I don't think you're misreading that. I think the difference is, is that before, we would, we collectively as a, as a planning board, we're being told that this was coming through and this is the way things are done. And we were following in that process. And what I'm hearing from you now is that we actually have more input and we are, and that this is a, um, things kind of, these lines that you're showing us, right? You're absolutely correct. These are the lines that we were shown. They showed up and were shown to us, like this is the way that it needs to be done. And then we're just like, this is the way that we decided it needed to be done. And I don't know that that conversation took place in total, right? Like things just kind of showed up. And one of the conversations that, that I have had is that we were under the impression that, well, I was under the impression that other areas were also discussing this. And then I thought maybe some of this was coming from council or some of this was coming from somewhere else. And then we were seeing it and it was kind of being led, like the decision was already made. And when I'm finding out that that's not the case and that we're the ones making the decision, I, I want you to feel comfortable in knowing that I think if you take a step back with us, like especially with like those red dis-, you know, with the red areas that Kelly was alluding to and some of these other things, and is that we, we don't know. Right? They kind of showed up. And if we have this chance to re-ask, because we're finding out that maybe some of it wasn't on the oven up, we may just end up asking more questions. Um.
Well, what, I'm not sure.
And I think that might be where we are.
I'm not sure. Yeah. What's, what's, especially you two, uh, what are you concerned about? The mixed use or the, the commercial only or exactly what?
I, I think it's, I think it's a lack of transparency, a lack of information, um.
Regarding.
Like we, so we, I know I've asked the question, how did you decide which parcels became under what, you know, went under which? And it was, oh, I had conversations with the landowners. And I'm like, well, what were those conversations? Are they on record? Like what, where is the information? Um, that was never shared?
Well, you know, I'm not sure, you know, the, long before I got on the board, uh, and I feel like an old timer now. Michael's the only one that's been around as long as I have. I know Rich said was here previously, but when, you know, during the, the original land use plan and the survey and everything was, was originally then was, you know, Marvin Village Center, was commercial. It was, you know, commercial. Uh, and then, so I think.
It was a commercial zone. Yeah, you could have a commercial.
Yeah, it was, it was quote, "commercial." Well, and then the concern was, well, how do we buffer the, the existing residentials? And that's how I think the mixed use came in. That, that there would be residential, residential between, you know, as part of it, between the existing residential and the commercial up front gave us a buffer. And that, you know, because they were one parcel and you couldn't really, I think, as I understood, you couldn't, you Scott Les property is a prime example because this is the deepest. You couldn't go in there and draw a line halfway across his property and say, the front half of your property is commercial and the back half is, is residential.
Well, so in that, in that, so like even before I got on the, the planning board, it was, it was the first like, what, twenty feet or something, or the first one hundred feet was commercial and then the back, the back.
At one point it was, so the two, I think it was three hundred feet.
Right, right. But the back of the property wasn't even in consideration. So there was something you can't.
Rezone.
Right, but.
Couldn't split a property.
Could you not subdivide? I mean, like it.
So essentially, and hopefully this will maybe honestly make things simple for, to understand, is when you take this development and everything that's put in it, the goal, the vision, like, yes, that's what was taken in by certain property owners and so on. The reason, another reason why it's kind of being done this way now with creating the, creating the districts, the conditionals on a district as well as creating this plan is that ultimately we are developers. We create the language and stuff that, that guide, that regulate and develop, and for those properties. But somebody's vision, I mean, I, I don't know. If it is ventures property, whoever, I'm just using that as an example. Doesn't mean anything tied. Well, they could find out that there's no way, shape or form, something could go there just because of, I mean, topography, I mean, it's pretty flat. I mean, but I don't know, maybe lead or some other property is a better example. With that being said, this is just, any type of future land use map, you, in, in this situation or around, so kind of wanting to kind of get into your point, when you're deriving a future land use map, it's kind of, there is certain data and input taken in to that future land use map. And part of that is from surrounding uses, uh, vacancy of property, you know, if a property is, in, in some terms, if it's a large tract, it could be used for some type of maybe, not here, high density type development or, or something like that. Um, and that's kind of what derives in that future land use map. And so that's kind of what was done in this process to get those properties where what was being proposed in the form-based code. And so essentially the same concept, there's no, and Tom, correct me if I'm wrong, and sometimes there's no rhyme or reason on a way a future land use map gets the way they do. I mean, it, you look at the existing use and okay, if it's parking open space, you know, that's why I like the churches of their city, because for the most part, that use is most likely not going to change. From the future land use, that's what the recommended future land use is. But for properties that are more suitable for development in a surrounding area, that's why it's identified sort of the way it is, as well as it does have some of that input in from the public. And in this case, with it being a small area plan, it has that input from those specifically property owners. But when you're kind of mentioning about regulating and going forward, you'll have that authority when you actually get a formal application for whatever that site-specific rezoning plan is. Because that's when you review it, you see if it's compliant. You guys actually can dive in and say, okay, your recommendation is that council approved and same thing. Like that's where you kind of dive into the weeds of, of what's being, what, what we'll go into with the form-based code.
I, I, I'm just gonna go back to saying that I think there are three properties that every single one of them is being treated differently. It is not consistent and it's because of either personal relationships or favoritism. I don't know what it was, but they're not, they're not being treated equally. And so it makes the map.
You're talking about the, 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 the commercial only. Is that right?
Well, because there, there's also a little property that, um, that some, it's the tiny, it's the tiniest one in the whole area. That's now considered mixed use. Why is that not commercial? And then why is, why is there a mixed use down in a residential area? I mean, like it's all, this is all information that was, was.
Once again, the nothing, that's where, yes, previously if the properties would have been rezoned that way, you do then, you're right, I would, you'd be upset because there was pigeonholdings of whatever that is. This is just a map to regulate and kind of provide that guide with that input.
And I, and I understand that. That's not what I'm talking about. It's like, why does this person get to even have the option to be commercial? Why would this property ever be commercial? Why would this property?
Because it's the district boundary that was kind of, it's been going through this process of being proposed.
Right. But what we're, what Melinda was trying to say earlier is that this was all being driven by someone and we did not know why it was being, we got no information as to why certain properties were deemed certain ways. And there was no transparency. We were just totally.
Hey guys, hey guys, I've got Christina on the phone. Uh, she can clear up some of this.
Hey guys, I'm coming in on the tail end of this, but that last question that you answered to ask Kelly, a lot of that was taken from DFI's recommendations as far as what the, um, particular areas for residential and commercial were. So that was definitely in their recommendations, for sure.
And I'm not necessarily talking about areas. I'm talking about specific parcels. Um, very specific. It, it's, and I, I, to be honest, I really don't want to get into this, like I don't, because I think there's some personal information that shouldn't be shared in public, but, um.
And I'd be more than glad to speak with you or anybody else that wants to, to speak if there's, you know, stuff that you feel like doesn't need to be divulged. I can't take it. I've been involved with every single discussion. But, you know, I do know that the parcels, or the areas, i.e. individual parcels, were taken from DFI's recommendation, from my understanding.
Okay, I'll have to re-familiarize myself with what they suggested because I don't remember offhand, but.
They identified, just brief synopsis, they identified nodes. So they identified, you know, the, the parcels that would be in the said nodes and what the, the, the parcels of those nodes should include, which was residential, commercial, mixed use, that sort of thing. So that, that's where most of that stuff was taken.
It's, uh, not with me.
Okay, no, no worries.
Hunter, what is the action that you're requesting tonight? Are you, are you asking to approve the small area plan?
Well, they, all that, they would be making a recommendation to council to either approve it or not approve it.
Right. And, and I, I have not been involved in the whole conversation here. So is the consensus that there's not a, a comfortable feeling with the small area plan as presented?
Uh, from, yes, from my understanding, it's partly that, but I think a lot of this is being derived because of the process, as in with the form-based code being presented first, where the small area plan typically comes beforehand, that derives the ordinance. And so that's why the plan would be adopted first and then they could dive into the weeds when we present the form-based code draft, uh, intent, which is intended to be next month. But the, this plan.
There's no urgency to any of this. So if people don't feel comfortable and they want to have questions answered or to, to go back and further research, I mean, I'm completely fine with y'all delaying that action until the next planning board meeting and, and giving us questions of what kind of clarity you guys want from us. I mean, it sounds like the question, one of the questions is, where were these parcels derived from? How did the small area plan, uh, originate as far as like the initial parcels? Um, we can go back and look at that information. But if y'all can provide a list of questions, that if you don't feel comfortable approving it, then we can get all that stuff settled for the next meeting. Does that sound like a plan or is there stuff that y'all want to further discuss? Or do you actually want to take action?
That's, that's completely fine with me. The biggest thing here is I know in theory. That's completely fine with me. The biggest thing here is I know in theory, yes, these, this and the form-based code go hand in hand, no doubt, but a lot of the issue that's running in here is that I don't want them to kind of intermingle because they are two separate documents and two different type of what their intent is. I mean, the intent of creating the district and all, that's all the same and that's where this, this plan was derived from the intent, goals, visions that was put into all the work that was put into the plan. So, I'm fine with you and I, I, I'm, once again, planning board can make what, whatever there. I guess my concern is, I don't want to have, I, I, I don't know if it's a good idea to have both the plan and then the draft of the form-based code certainly kind of on the same agenda. I know that some of that is like, well, how do we make some of these recommendations? Well, that's where we change.
Well, let me back up, let me back up one second to make sure I'm understanding and, and the planning board is also understanding in essence, what, what it is that you're doing. The small area plan is really for us to be able to regulate some of the residential aesthetics, correct?
It's got guidelines and recommendations in there that kind of, it, basically the small area plan is the foundation, as, as Austin says, the executive summary, that's essentially a small land use plan for this specific area. And so, um, it's essentially just very generic information and plan stuff, but it helps build a foundation to one, help adopt, adopt the form-based code as well as when they get those applications for rezoning, use that, use the plan, the guide and all the other, I mean, everything that's been adopted with this plan.
Okay, so can we just, can we just get whatever questions and concerns they have addressed at the next meeting and just push the form-based code back to the
That's no problem.
To the next meeting, so that it's not on the same.
Yeah.
I want, I want the planning board to feel comfortable with whatever it is that they're recommending. I want them to, you know, fully support it, so they feel feel very good about it and there's no hurry to do it and if they've got concerns, we definitely need to get those addressed and we don't have to rush the form-based code at all.
No, yeah, and like I said, I understand, I, I just needed to, I, I, I would like to still keep them separate and not one, one, kind of as what you're saying, overload an agenda or to, I mean, certain ones, so that's completely fine.
Are there questions that, that the board has that we did not get addressed tonight?
Well, I, I would suggest that anybody who's got specific questions that have not been addressed, if you would send them to Hunter.
And please do it ahead of time.
I mean, yeah, do it.
Well, here, I'll put mine, I'll, I'll put mine out there now. I still, you know, and this was, this was kind of where my jumping in the conversation started is that is, is, to me, these lines were set up arbitrarily, right, with the different areas? And I can appreciate the DFI came in, but they also said that like without those additional 47 homes or whatever we're looking at on the previous and Odell properties, that this coffee shop would never make it. And, and we know from the surrounding areas that that is not a fact, right, that that's not the case. So I would love to know that baseline, right, like Christine, like you were just mentioning is, yeah, where did these things, where did these initial lines come from and how was that specific decision made? I would love to know that.
And Hunter, we can address that tomorrow, uh, we can pull a DFI report and try to figure out where that was derived from, where that input was derived. Because I know DFI had some type of involvement with property owners. And it, and it, it could, it could have stemmed from something where property owners were willing to develop, I, I'm not really sure, but I do know that.
It was, they were willing to develop and there are parcels that are currently in our map that are not in the map for DFI. I'm looking at it right now. So.
Okay.
And.
What parcels are not in the DFI map?
Uh, previous and Odell. And then the one that is currently commercial just said they were agreeable to development.
So previous and Odell got added in, is that, is that what?
Yes.
Okay.
And, and you know, that's, that's just why I'm like, I, I think there's just a lot of confusion and there's inconsistencies and so, you know, I think after what happened last time, being rushed or pushed to, to agree to something is, is a little, uh, I don't want to use the term PTSD because it's not what it is, but it's like, I, I, I'm very hesitant to just agree to something because.
I understand. What we'll do is we'll, we'll try to get some answers on that for you guys and if, you know, at, at the end of the day, if it's not an area that you guys want to recommend in the plan, we take it out and council makes the decision as to, we know what's included and what's not. So, uh, we want, we want y'all to feel comfortable with your recommendation. We want y'all to have all the information that's needed in order to make a decision. So we'll definitely get that information for you and don't feel rushed or, or pushed in this, I mean.
So we will, just, yeah, table this, uh, but people with specific questions need to get them to Hunter within the week or, you know.
Please don't wait till the next meeting. You don't need to be here till nine o'clock.
I will say, yeah, if you guys have any questions, specific questions or comments, recommendations on what's in the plan, please have them to me, I would say probably in the next two weeks because some of that will, actually I would probably ask, request by the end of next week.
Yeah.
Because then if we're going to have to, if there's certain things that we need to look at or revise potentially, just we need to go back to the MHD committee. I'm not.
Well, and there's also stuff that you're going to have to research too, so I mean, you're going to have to take time to, to get all that stuff prepared, so that, if that's the only question, I mean, that, that we need to research and that's a pretty easy fix. But aside from that, you know, any other substantial questions about, you know, where things were derived and, and past stuff, we need to have that in advance for sure.
And then Hunter, something that may also be helpful is if, since we did this in a convoluted way, which is not your fault, right? But now, now we're your team and, and here we are. If we did this in a convoluted way before, it may also be helpful, I, I think maybe some of the lines are blurry on what this and the next thing are supposed to do and how there's supposed to be, I mean, you know, I don't want to go like old school English professor, I need to got like a Venn diagram or like something that shows us like this is what this is, this is what this is, and then the two meet at the end, so then maybe we can like try to keep some of the other stuff out of our brains.
But what's the theory behind this? Like what's the theory and process?
Yeah, it, it really is Schrodinger's cat to me. And I don't mean that mean, but like, cat's dead, like I, it's out of the box, I already know, I can't put it back in the box, you know?
Yeah, and that's what, and like I said, that's what's tough and that's what Tom and I tried to do with this plan was to take all those stuff that you guys did do and put it into kind of a plan form. Or, I mean, that's, but to put it to understand and, and yeah, we could definitely get something like that for you guys.
That'd be very helpful for me. So that and the list of how we got here, that's, that would help me immensely.
Okay. So we need, everybody understands where you're going from here? Moving on.
Yes.
Action items.
I got nothing.
We don't need a motion table or anything.
No. I don't have any, I don't have any action items.
All right, board member comments? Kelly?
Hang in there, Hunter.
It's all good, it's just, trust me, I, it's like, as you can ask council, it's like I find something new or different, weird every day and it's like, okay, back to square one.
I don't, I don't necessarily think that this is square one.
Yeah, no, no.
But I, I do think.
I don't mind.
I do think that we are a bit gun shy with this, so just be patient with us because.
Oh, and like I said, I.
And it has nothing to do with you, it has everything to do with how this unfolded and we just want to get it right because.
And that's mostly, honestly, that's what the intent is of this plan and then, and what we're doing with amending the form-based code is to one, make it clear and make sure everybody understands, but also can pick it up and make sure they all understand. So, that's like, you know, there is kind of no rush there, I mean, it's, so we'll, we'll get there and it's no, no worries.
All right, uh, Melinda, any?
I was going to say the same thing, just hang in there and, um, thanks everybody for putting in the work and for doing the thinking. And, you know, I, I think this is great, quite frankly, because this is personal, this is home, this is where we have chosen to live, this is where our families live, this is where, you know, hopefully future generations, I mean, I'm the fourth generation to live here and I want my kids to want to be here. I mean, like I just think this is, this is really important stuff, you know, so it's worth putting in the time and the effort and if it doesn't speed through, it doesn't speed through. It needs to be done right, so thank you.
Ken, do you have any comment?
Ken Marino.
Ken?
I thought you said Ken, no, I'm good.
Okay, uh, Rich?
Yes, Stan, thank you very much for all your work, but we know that there's a, there's a lot of time put into this and, uh, and I certainly appreciate my peers' comments and, and this is something that I am going to read in depth and take a very long, hard look at so that I can give the best opinion that I can. And again, as a 16-year resident, I do want to see what's best for the village more and, uh, that's all, thank you.
Ken? Bob?
No, I, I'm, I'm just happy to be on this, uh, as a liaison to the council on this board, I mean, I'm, you make my job so much easier and so much, I guess, you give me the knowledge that when this kind of conversation comes up amongst the council members, I feel kind of like I have an advantage on everybody, so.
Okay.
John?
I don't have anything to add to anybody. Thank you. I knew it was not going to be as short as some previous ones, just things that were on the agenda.
You got us full in the last one. Motion to, oh, can I make a motion to adjourn?
Yes.
At 9:12 PM.
You made a motion?
I made it.
All right, that, Rich? All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you.
Who said?